Good evening, everyone. Before we start the meal, too much eating over the holidays, the meeting. I'd like to open with a prayer. Is there someone here from the Ministerial Alliance? Nathan? Oh, go ahead. You're welcome.
Father, we thank you for this evening. And we thank you for this body. And we ask you to bless this meeting, or let us truly rely on you for strength. And we ask for your guidance and wisdom as we proceed through this evening's meeting. We thank you so much for dying on the cross for our sins. Lord, I pray that you will continue to save people even in these latter days. Father, we love you and we praise you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Josh, would you open the meeting with a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the meeting, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the passing of Paula Volkmer. Paula was a longtime city employee, longtime director of the 911 Center in those activities while it was integrated into the police department and after it went on to its own. And she served as a president for that for a good number of years. But looking back, you know, one of the things that I always admired about Paula was how many people that she has trained and developed over the many years, how many people came into the workforce in that capacity and under her tutelage. So if we could just take a few minutes to remember Paula. Thank you. Start the meeting with the consent agenda. Consider the approval of the meetings from the December 2nd and the December 16th meetings. Are there any questions regarding the meeting notes? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Fredly will second.
Motion made in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Second item on the agenda is reports of various boards and commissions. There are eight reports there. Are there any questions regarding any of them?
I just have one as it relates to item F, the center income statement ending in November 2024. It struck me, well, one, I'm glad to see that the overall headcount or customer count has gone up this month for the first time since...
You care to lean? Sorry, I can't hear you very well.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, it's fine. Glad to see that the customer count went up for the first time since May, I think it was, maybe June. But I noticed in looking at all of the charts and everything that a lot of these metrics that are displayed here, these are outcome metrics. These are like, if you do everything right, if this is the end of the tail, this is the result that we're driving for, these are the goals. But these goals aren't necessarily things that are within the center's control. So the question becomes, what are you measuring that is within your control to tell you that you are on the right path? You know, so just the end state, the desire is to increase membership, right? Okay. But increased membership is not necessarily something that's in your control. People have to sign up, people have to keep their renewals. There are a thousand choices that you don't have any control over. So what is it that the center is doing that is within their control and are measuring to make sure that they're moving in the direction of those goals?
I don't know. I'd have to give that some thought. I mean, they do have a budget for marketing and they have goals for return on investment for the various steps and practices they do with outreach of their marketing efforts, but I don't know if we've got anything that's currently measuring that. So let me give that some thought. And if you've got some suggestions on some things, we'd be happy to look at more. So I just don't have a great answer for you.
I don't know if I can give you a complete answer, but I can give you some examples.
I appreciate it.
One of them would be what's called a net promoter score. Okay? That's a very sophisticated method to judge the satisfaction, if you will, of members and things like that. So why is that metric important? Because it's one of the metrics that you use to retain membership as well as to leverage to get new members. So that, I would tell you, in a sense, is also a leading indicator because if you don't have a high net promoter score, for instance, you're going to have a problem recruiting. So that net promoter score basically relies on the fact that if you're a member, how likely are you to tell somebody else to be a member, for example, as an indication? So that is a metric that they control. They control by virtue of how well they manage the facility, how clean the facility is, and so on and so on and so on. So it's not a complete answer, but it's one example, I think, of some of the things that they do.
All right. Let me also... Go ahead, Rob.
No, I was just, well, I got a feeling what you're going to say is probably more important than what I'm going to say, but I do want to just put out a point here that so we've hired somebody to do this and we have some incentives for them to do it. So I think that, I mean, my opinion is, is that I think it's good for us to observe, but a part of this, I think we have to get out of the way and let them do what they do because they're the professionals at doing it. And then we can monitor their progress over time. John?
Yeah, and one of the other reports we give to the Rec Advisory Committee monthly is what we call a key metrics report. And it goes beyond just the financial, which we tend to put in the council packet. So let me forward that to council this last month and see if maybe that's got some of that information in there.
I would appreciate that. Thanks, John. Thank you, Mayor Lou.
Any other questions on the meeting notes? If not, we do not have any public hearings scheduled. We do not have any special presentations. So moving on to old business, first item is an ordinance to approve the annexation and assignment of zoning to Old Outer Road. Don?
I'm having technical difficulties.
You're all right, Don.
Yeah.
It's nice to hear quiet in here. I mean, you just seem to say...
I thought I took a nap.
Florida Falls is going to fall asleep over there, but he looks tired.
I'm back.
Work hard.
Okay, we'll just do it from this side. Okay. Well, we'll just leave it up like that. So I'll be quick. We went through this at the last council meeting. This is for the annexation for what will be the future site of the VA clinic. So it is just west of Sally Road on Old Wire Outer Road. This little piece right here has already been annexed into the city. All of the property that's in the city limits adjacent is Zone C2 already, so that's the appropriate zoning for this site. The ownership will be retained by the developer and then leased back to the VA, so government zoning wouldn't be appropriate, or public zoning wouldn't be appropriate in this instance. There's a street view. And then this is just a survey that they provided to us. One thing that we did talk about at the last meeting is that the statute requires that the fire protection district be reimbursed for what they would have gotten in taxes. The developer agreed that they would pay that, and so we did include that in the ordinance that's in your packet. And as a reminder, this is a voluntary annexation. The utilities do have capacity. The comprehensive plan designates, the current comprehensive plan designates that this is mixed commercial use. It's adjacent to the city limits, so appropriate for annexation. And Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of six to zero. Do you have any questions for me?
There's no questions for Don. Can we have a final reading?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to approve the annexation of a portion of 13063 Old Wire Outer Road into the corporate limits of the city of Ralla and assigning zoning of said property as the C2 General Commercial District.
The tribunal will make a motion to approve.
Hans seconds.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Penner?
Yes.
Reven?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Churbin? Bulch?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Fredley?
Yes.
Ten eyes.
Ordinance is approved. Second item is an ordinance to approve the vacation of alleys in Cowan's addition.
So I think in your packets, these two got flip-flopped again, but I will go ahead and do the item B, since that's one I have first. So this is the one that we discussed that's right off of Highway 72. The discussion last time, well, I'll go ahead and, here's a view from Highway 72 looking at the alley. This is the original alley. As you can see, you know, it's changed since it was platted in the early 1900s. No utilities, and no utility easement would be retained. There were no objections from the utility providers. And these are preemptive vacations intended to save time and effort. It should be noted that... It should be noted that future development, that access onto 72 is not likely. And this came from planning and zoning with a six-zero recommendation to not be approved.
So just for clarification, what she is saying is item B is actually C in our packet?
That's correct.
Correct.
Yes, they were flip-flopped in the packet.
Nathan, can you speak for, or on behalf of planning and zoning as to why they voted six-zero to not recommend this?
So this has been an effort that Tom has brought up that for these right-of-ways that basically are not needed anymore, which is to go get some low-hanging fruit. No one needs them, no one wants them. It doesn't hurt anyone to get rid of these right-of-ways. This has been the first one that's come across here that actually seems to impact some business owners and property owners in a way that they desired for it not to be. So that was one of the starting points. One of the individuals had a property for sale and they were interested in having access onto Highway 72 potentially. If you go further down, you can't make a left as you get closer to Highway 72 or closer to 63, you can't make a left out of there. So he desired to maintain that for the potential of sale of property. He didn't want that causing any issues. And so I think for planning and zoning, it wasn't helpful for the property owners. It was maybe going to be a deterrent for the sale of a property, so they saw no reason to recommend approving in that case.
Any other questions for Don?
Mayor, I might add as well, you know, back when we were doing the 72 extension, and this is part of the first 600-foot that was done as part of the Walgreens extension in preparation, at that time, we talked about closing this alley access entirely. And there was concern from the property owners as well, not sure what the future's going to look like. And so I think there's just been this realization, this is going to be a problem someday. This is a terrible location to provide access in and out of there. But we understand it was always going to be part of a bigger development. And I think that's what my sense was from the folks that were concerned. We don't know what might happen with this property, and so we'll leave it for the time being, address it when we sort of tackle the larger area there. And that doesn't seem unreasonable from staff's perspective either. So this is one we'll probably have to revisit someday, but I don't know that this was one that we felt strongly about at this point.
And there was actually, just to add, there was actually, I said there was a property, there was actually two property owners that came to plan zoning, both of which said that they utilized the alleyway. I think their belief was actually maneuvering vehicles in and out of the alleyways, is that they would utilize that alleyway coming down to get like larger trucks in and out of there. Maybe suggested like even like the trash trucks. I don't know if they actually verified whether the trash trucks ended up using that alleyway to actually go up to connect to 72, but that was some of the comments that they had made.
So just to point a clarity, when we had our last meeting, we had a public hearing, correct? For this, this was on our last agenda, right?
Yeah.
Do we have, the record reflects that we didn't have a person comment about this. Is that correct?
No, we did.
No, we had one.
We did.
Okay, so I'm looking back at the record and it says we had, I thought we had a gentleman here. I don't want to name his name.
You did.
We did.
We did, for this one.
Can you tell me?
You're not on there?
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to cause a problem with that.
No.
But I want to make sure we listen to that person's voice as well.
Travis Barbe.
Yeah, that's who it was. That's my understanding.
Well, he only gave his first name.
So I see under 1A, 8, and 9 where we talked, maybe I'm on the wrong page, but I want to make sure. Letter B, it says, "With no citizen comments, the hearing was closed." I'm just trying to, an adjacent property owner on the right of the alley wants to see the alley, okay.
That was him, but he only gave his first name, so we just put adjacent.
Okay. He wants to see the alley remain open, is what his, okay. All right. I just want to make sure we, when a person stands up in front of the council, I think we need to make sure we remember what that person says in a public hearing, so that's not trying to say you were wrong, for sure.
Absolutely.
Laurie, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Any other questions? If not, can we have the final reading?
An ordinance approving the vacation of an alley in Cowan's addition to the city of Ralla, generally bounded by Black Street, Spillman Avenue, Walker Avenue, and the railroad
Is there a motion to approve?
Isn't the railroad right-of-way the other one? Isn't this the one?
They're questioning your packet.
Yes.
Yeah, this one.
It's not the right reading.
Highway 72.
You guys did this to me last time.
Yep.
Thank you, Nathan.
You failed twice. All right. An ordinance approving the vacation of an alley in Cowan's addition to the city of Ralla, generally bounded by Highway 72, Spillman Avenue, Walker Avenue, and Strobaugh Street.
And just a suggestion, we did do a first reading on it. I don't think council's compelled to take final action, but it would sure be easier for the record if council, even with a motion to consider final reading, and then vote it down. It would clarify the record and kind of close this case if you'd be so inclined.
So do we make a motion to reject?
No.
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 Motion approved and then vote.
Yeah.
And even if you make the motion, you can vote against your own motion.
So I'll make that motion.
Josh will second.
Motion made in second.
I'm wondering who's going to fall on the sword.
Yeah, I got two weeks in real here.
There's no further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Bulch?
No.
Churbin?
No.
Reven?
No.
Roman?
No.
Steen?
No.
Kessinger?
No.
Hahn?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Fredley?
No.
Penner?
No.
Zero eyes.
Item C, an ordinance to approve the vacation of alleys in Cowan's addition, bounded by Black Street.
Okay, so this is just a little further up north in between Walker and Spillman, just north of Black Street. As you can see, this alley has never actually been developed. And here's a look at the original plat for that alley. This one will retain an easement, although no objections were provided from utility providers, but it's just a safe bet to retain those easements. And again, these are just preemptive vacations that are intended to save time and effort later on. And as a reminder, the alleys will go back to the adjacent property owners. This one did come from planning and zoning with a six-zero recommendation of approval. Any questions?
Any questions for Don? If not, final reading, please.
Sure. Capable.
Yeah, item C.
An ordinance approving the vacation of an alley in Cowan's addition to the city of Ralla, generally bounded by Black Street, Spillman Avenue, Walker Avenue, and the railroad right-of-way.
Tribunal will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fredley?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Penner?
Yes.
Churbin?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
Reven?
Yes.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Ten eyes.
Moving on, the last item under old business is an ordinance to approve a text amendment regarding parking.
Okay, I'll try to be quick on this one as well. As you may recall, the current ordinance in Chapter 42, whenever they updated Chapter 42, basically only allows parking in front yards on hard surfaces. So if you have a driveway and your side yard, your backyard, you, as it's written right now, could not park any kind of vehicle or trailer. This came up as a code enforcement issue, and so we took it to planning and zoning, had a discussion. They talked about all the changes that they would like to see made. We went back, made those changes, and then took it back to planning and zoning. So we made some changes. We clarified that this only applies to one and two family residential uses. We defined what pavement is, durable, dust-free, and hard material. There is an exception in there that you don't have to park on a hard surface if you have a small utility trailer no larger than 12 feet that is not visible from public view, but that parking cannot create a nuisance. The location is in all yards instead of just the front yard, and it defines the yard. But then they also wanted an exception for commercial vehicles, vehicles making pickups or deliveries, and emergency vehicles. We also did add a piece about RV parking. We get quite a few complaints about people living in their RVs, and so we just clarified that we do have the means with the building code and the property maintenance code to address that, but this would also allow for folks that want to visit, you know, grandchildren or friends for a longer period of time, but not for, you know, unlimited amount of time. And then it also does talk about the access to the parking area can't cause any damage to the yard or the right-of-way. And then I will add, there have been a few questions that have come up, one being about taxes. If you added a paved surface to your property, how much would that cost you? And about 200 square foot of parking area would add about $4.50 annually to your taxes. And then there have been some questions about, what if I already have gravel? Do I have to make it a hard surface? Existing gravel would be legal non-conforming use, so you don't have to update that unless you're enlarging it, but you can, you know, maintain that gravel. So if grass is coming through and you want to add some gravel to what you have existing, you can maintain it. And then it also does not apply to large lots, the large rural lots, kind of on the outskirts of town. If you have 50 feet of pavement, you can have gravel past that 50 feet. I believe the ordinance says with the Public Works Director approval. And so with that, planning and zoning recommended approval six to zero.
Any questions for Don?
Yeah, on the gravel. So if somebody enlarged their driveway for whatever reason, they couldn't enlarge it with gravel, they have to put a hard surface down. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct. And that's the way the ordinance is today. So I believe the hard surface has been on the books for, gosh, 20-plus years.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Did the, Don, did the section about RVs, did that change from three days to 14 days? Did it used to be three days? It hasn't ever been in there specifically. Okay. So right now, when we get a complaint, we basically have to tell people that they can't do it. Now, our code enforcement gives them a period of time to get it out of there, but technically right now, you can't do it at all. Okay.
These properties that are out in Ward 4 with bigger, you know, we're talking a couple acres plus, what kind of ramifications are we looking at there? If they have tractor equipment or, you know, big trailers, cattle trailers, or something?
So yeah, that first 50 feet of driveway have to be paved, and that's, so nothing really changes for them.
Okay.
That's how the ordinance is today.
So if you have a three-acre property and you wanted to build a shop out back, you would have to pave that?
You'd have to pave the first 50 feet, and then the rest could be gravel or whatever you would want it to be.
And paving is concrete or asphalt?
Hard surface, yeah.
And that reason, again, that would be for new, is that when rains come, that gravel washes frequently into the public right-of-way. So that's why the idea of paving the first 50 feet, not requiring it beyond that.
Right.
Yeah, I was just kind of thinking, somebody, you know, they're already in their driveway and kind of out back that's not really close to connected, but I guess the rules are the rules, so. I was just, you know what I'm saying? Like if you put a shop out back and you had plenty of room back there, but 50 feet doesn't seem too terribly honest.
Not real long.
Now, to clarify, the first 50 feet is from the road.
From the road, correct.
If you put a shop out back, the first 50 feet of the shop wouldn't have to be...
Right, right. It's only 50 feet from the road.
Okay, I feel much better about that. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, I wanted to clarify that that's...
I was just, I was thinking, oh, man. Yeah, thank you.
So it's just from the road in, has to be 50 feet. If you do more gravel work, you know, if you have the acreage, you can have gravel running back and around your shop or whatever, maybe in larger lots.
Right.
And for those existing residences that, you know, just right now currently have gravel, we're not going to force them to get 50 feet of concrete, are we?
Correct. Everything that's existing today is legal non-conforming. They don't, unless they want to expand, then they would have to pave.
That first 50 feet.
Right. And that's, the ordinance also says that that has to be with approval of the Public Works Director. So in that case, it'd probably be a case-by-case basis, and if there's, you know, storm inlets in the back, you know, that might change that.
Any other questions for Don? If not, can we have the final reading?
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending Chapter 42, Planning and Zoning, Article 3, General Provisions, Section 42-313, general requirements pertaining to parking.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Tribunal will second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Hahn?
Yes.
Churbin?
Yes.
Reven?
Yes.
Roman?
No.
Steen?
Yes.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Penner?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fredley?
Yes.
Nine eyes.
Ordinance is approved. Moving on to new business, the first item is a discussion on an ordinance declaring Ralla as a sanctuary city for the unborn. John, would you like to start this?
Sure, Mayor, thanks. Really, we're putting this on the agenda based on a couple of conversations that council had on November 18th. Councilman Josh Roman introduced this idea of declaring Ralla as a sanctuary city for the unborn. The first of its kind in Missouri, as far as we understand, although there have been several cities and counties in Texas and five or six other states that have done it to a lesser degree, but Texas has kind of led the way in this effort. We've had a couple of pro-life advocates, Brian Westbrook and Mark Dixon spoke on the proposal, and then had a representative from Attorney General's Office appear at the December 18th meeting. At that point, council asked that this be placed back on the agenda for further consideration, which is what we have before you tonight. And I think with that, Mayor, you wanted to talk to council about it a little bit.
Yeah, I want to open the conversation before we get into the legalities and the nits and nats of the wording. You know, I've read everything that was given to me on this subject matter over the last couple of weeks, and I struggled understanding it. And over the holidays, people have asked me, what is council trying to do? What is the underlying reason here? And I felt that I couldn't really clearly articulate an answer to that question. And I wondered to myself, because we haven't had very much of a discussion up here, is how the rest of the council could answer that question if you're asked it the same way. So, again, before we get into legalities, and just have a good discussion on what it is that we're trying to do. So let me start by asking a very simple question. What is it that we're trying to do?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to bring this to the floor to discuss.
Okay, so we're jumping into the legalese. If that's what's supposed to be, then have at it. But I'm still going to talk about it.
I'll second that. It's so we can discuss it.
Okay.
Per Robert's rules.
Oh, God forbid, but that's good with that. Go ahead. Motion made and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.
Wait, we don't do a motion to discuss, do we?
Well, because he made the motion, we have to.
Well, motion second, then it's open for discussion.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we don't have a...
So that process wasn't even done properly.
I'm just saying I didn't vote. I didn't vocally vote because I didn't think we were supposed to at that point. That's all I'm saying.
There was a motion, I think, that says we'd like to talk about this.
Right.
And was seconded.
And then it's open for discussion. I thought that's what we were trying to get to.
So you want to discuss it before you vote on whether we're going to discuss it?
I don't... I've never heard us vote on...
It's going to be a long night, folks. Okay, if you want to discuss it, discuss it, and then we'll vote again.
I think he was just saying the proper process.
I didn't know what I was voting.
Since we wanted to go...
I didn't know we were voting.
Okay.
I think it's been approved.
All right. So now we're allowed to discuss this.
I think we're currently discussing this.
So I'm going to get right to the first question. What is it that we're trying to do, specifically?
So Amendment 3 was passed in the state of Missouri at 51.6%. What this ordinance does is Amendment 3 has to work within the confines of the federal statutes. Because the federal statutes supersede state constitutions and state statutes and local law.
Okay. So there's a constitutional amendment, and it was passed. And we're questioning the validity of that? I'm not accusing, I'm just trying to understand.
No, it passed. We're not questioning the validity.
Okay, so you still didn't really answer the question. What is it that we're trying to do?
Amendment 3 is to work within the confines of the federal statutes.
Okay, fine, that happened. So what's our role in that? What are we trying to do? Forget what the state did and what the federal did, but what is it that we're trying to do?
To point a finger, saying, hey, Amendment 3 needs to work within...
Please lean forward to your microphone.
Yes. Amendment 3, we're pointing to the federal statute saying that you will work within the confines of the federal statutes, 1461, 1462, and...
And who are we telling that to? We're telling it to the state to make sure that they comply with the federal government?
No.
So who are we telling what to?
We can only cover the city of Ralla.
Okay, so who are we telling? Who are we telling to operate within the confines of the federal government?
Everyone. I mean, that's...
Decorum, please. Hey, that's what... Police chief?
Okay.
Can... I'm sorry, it's not my meeting.
I'm still not sure I understand that, but maybe somebody else could take a whack at it.
Whatever ordinances that we pass cover the city, within the city limits of Ralla, correct? That goes for everyone inside the city limits of Ralla, whether it's businesses or private citizens.
So we're going to pass an ordinance that's applicable to the people and businesses within the city of Ralla?
Yes.
Okay.
And what's it going to state, or what's it going to accomplish?
What it's going to accomplish, again, is the fact that Amendment 3 that passed has to work within the confines of the Comstock Act.
Yeah, okay. So wouldn't state statute then come to play? Like, the state legislature has to completely redo all of the statutes that were recently reversed by Jackson County Court in light of the constitutional amendment passing? Wouldn't the state then have the obligation to come back around and pass a whole new set of laws that are in line with federal statute, as you've noted? And then they would just become part and parcel of what we have already adopted in city code?
So what I'm... I'm going to make sure I understand what you're asking. What you're saying is, in the future, the state could pass laws that essentially mirror what we're doing here? And you're asking, why would we do it?
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to understand why we would pass an ordinance at the city level that says federal statutes apply when the only time we have done that otherwise is with regard to telecommunications licensing for a cable company? So I'm curious why we need to go to the effort to say that this set of federal statute or federal code, or the CFRs, are applicable within the confines of the city of Ralla? And how the state statutes and state licensing and everything else that's already in place doesn't already accomplish that? And so what is it that passing this statute or an ordinance like this would accomplish?
So, let me get to it.
And Josh, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand it.
Sure, absolutely. In this packet, on page 6A12, 456.003, the private right of action. This is the portion that would help enforce the Comstock Act at the federal level. So we're pointing to the Comstock Act, saying, here's a law. You have to work within the confines of this law, and then here's the enforcement mechanism.
Okay.
So we're doing this to help enforce the Comstock Act? And who are we helping? Who are we helping to enforce the Comstock Act?
So the city is not going to help enforce anything. The state is not going to help enforce anything. This is a private right of action, so the citizens will enforce this through civil...
Can we let, get a little decorum, please?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We're going to pass an ordinance, normally of which means we're going to enforce an ordinance, but we're not going to enforce it. We're going to give permission to the citizens to enforce it on their own. Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
And why would we do that?
Because...
Or why do we even have to give people the permission to do that? I'm assuming that in this country, anybody can sue anybody for anything. So why are we having to give somebody permission to do that?
Mayor, do you care if I call Markley-Dixon up to answer that question?
Yes, I do mind.
Well, I'd like to...
No, before we get any further, we need to have a discussion to understand what the hell we're talking about, because it's obvious that we don't. And the fact that there's other people up here that are not weighing in tells me that probably like me, they're not sure what we're trying to do. So I'm not picking on you, Josh, but you seem to be the one that has the most expertise in this. So take me through that path. Why are we passing an ordinance, which we're saying we're not going to enforce, partly because we can't, in order to give the people the right to sue somebody? I can't connect those dots.
Well, we do, we have private rights of action. We have, yes, we have private rights of action within state statutes. We have private rights of action within federal statutes. So we're not doing anything different than any other level of government does.
Okay, so I think what you're saying is, people already have that right. Is that what you're saying?
Well, no. There are certain laws at the state level similar, the enforcement mechanism is similar to this, okay? It's almost identical, but they're for something else, so...
So my question still remains. It's a question, it's not a statement.
Mm-hmm.
Are we doing this to give citizens the opportunity or right to take legal action?
Yes.
Okay. Now, why is that necessary? When in a country like America, we can sue anything, anybody for anything? Why do we have to do this?
In order to enforce it this way, we have to do it.
So we are enforcing something?
No, I didn't say "we," I said "in order to enforce it."
So in order for a citizen to initiate legal action, we're saying that we have to pass this to give them that right to sue?
Yes.
Okay. Very narrow question. Is that true?
Well, I'll give you a very lawyerly answer, partly true. You're creating a local government cause of action. People already, I think the testimony we've heard, is that people already have that right under RICO to enforce these same things. So I think that cause of action already exists at the federal level. This would give, I guess, the citizens of Ralla some sort of independent cause of action? Although I'm not sure how that even works, I have to be honest.
Okay, so I'm walking away by saying it's fuzzy.
One of the biggest questions that I've had is basically elaborating on enforcement. So what you were touching on, talking about citizens suing, who would they sue? Are they suing the city, or are they suing a clinic?
It'd sue another person, it sounds like.
Or a business.
An entity or a business.
Or a doctor, or a pharmacist.
So it wouldn't be suing the city to get this... Because we already know the enforcement there.
No, it'd be like me suing you, Megan. You know, if I thought you were in violation of this, I could sue you. And if I win, then I get everything. And if you win, then you've just been harassed for a while.
Right. But, so, still going back to the enforcement side of it, so then would you, if you wanted to sue me, Bill, would you be... How would you, would you be coming and investigating to see if I was breaking?
I...
And then you would sue me and say that you've seen this, that?
I don't think that I even need to go that far. I mean, basically, the way I read it, and I could be reading it wrong, so let's start there. A little bit of humility goes a long way. If I thought that you were in violation of the Comstock Act, then I could file a public civil suit against you. And then you would have to prove that you were in...
Right.
You were in compliance with the Comstock Act. And then the case would be resolved in civil court. And if I win, if I've proven, you know, through legal maneuverings, that you have violated the Comstock Act, then there are penalties that you incur.
I get it, I was just seeing if you...
So why is the city part and parcel to that? If that already exists, and Citizen A can sue Citizen B, why are we in this equation?
Josh, I think that one's for you, bud, because that's what I'm trying to figure out, too. If it already exists, why do we need to... And I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, if there's a... Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so, again, it's just, what we're doing is we're pointing the finger back to the Comstock Act. We're saying that, just hear me out, follow through with me. Amendment 3 is going to work within the confines of the Comstock Act. And what we're doing is by creating a private right of action, that is the enforcement mechanism. If you guys look at that, again, on 6A12, Section Bravo, number three, actually, pretty much all of Bravo, statutory damages in an amount not less than $100,000 for each violation, number four is costs and reasonable attorney fees. Like, we're laying out the private right of action in this.
So we're not going to enforce anything. We're not a party to the lawsuit.
Correct.
But we're telling somebody, this is what you can do, when they already have that right? Again, I just, I can't understand that.
Well, we've done that at the state level, too. Again, there's probably seven different...
This isn't the state, this is Ralla, Missouri.
I understand that, and I'm answering your question, okay? You're asking, and I'm telling you, that other governmental bodies have done this, and you're asking why. And I'm telling you that we can do this, and this is why. I'm giving you, the answer is right underneath the private right of action. We're giving them something to go with.
That's just the how, that's not the why.
Yeah, I don't understand the why either.
Can I ask a question? When you say bring an action, what court would they bring an action in? I mean, we don't have any jurisdiction beyond the municipal court. So is that where they would bring their cause of action? Or are we telling the state courts what they can do?
Well, again, well, you're right, we don't have anything outside of the city court.
Josh, can I interject real quick?
Go ahead.
So I, I've read this, and I've thought long and hard about it, and, you know, received calls today, both for it and against it, emails forwarded against it, kind of calls today by people, asked them that were from other areas, why they were calling me and what their intention was, and then a few that screamed at me, even though they didn't know where I stood. I just let them talk. But it seems to me that a city council should remain within the boundaries of what our citizens put us in place to do. While I have a specific view of this topic, I feel like we're out of our lane. I feel like this is a state issue. I feel like the state of Missouri should have done a better job, or maybe left it the way it was, depending on how you feel with Amendment 3. But I think that the city of Ralla is being pulled into litigation that could create problems for our citizens and cost money. I personally wish abortion didn't happen, but I also respect the fact that I'm not 100% of the citizens in this community. So I think we're going down a road here that's going to put us in a position where we're going to end up in court. And I don't feel like the citizens of Ralla elected us to put us in court over this issue. I wish that this body wouldn't take up this subject, even though I would like to see this solved at the state issue. I don't think that Ralla is the best place to do that. It should have been handled in Jefferson City. Not pleased with the politicians in Jefferson City, quite frankly.
So if it's not handled at the state level, do we not, do we just not handle it at all?
Josh, I think we're going to have to see it handled at the state level or the federal level, and it's already been made clear that it's up to the states. And so it seems to me that the state needs to do their part.
So on one hand, we want the state to interject, and on another hand, with other subjects, we don't want the state to interject. So either we want to govern as local as possible, or we do not. And that's what this is. That's why I brought this.
I respect what you're trying to do, and I respect the views of both sides. Even though I may not agree with one side, I still respect that those persons have that view. But what I do not respect is the idea of bringing a lawsuit to our community that creates more problems for our...
Now, that lawsuit is not going to cost the taxpayers a dime.
I realize that, but I also know that...
And how is...
Well, hold on, hold on. It creates negative press, it creates problems where individuals may go, I don't want to live in this community, whether, depending on what side you are on the issue. It does not benefit the citizens of Ralla in that regard. I understand from a philosophical or a moral compass where you're coming from for this, but I don't believe that the city should fight for this.
and sideways. We all know that. And there's more to come. But the citizens should also know that the city has received two notices from the American Civil Liberties Union. One was for a request of information under the Sunshine Law. And the second one was a lengthy letter, which I'll just summarize and said, "It's a shot across the bow, and we're watching what you do." So, for what that's worth. We keep making a reference to the Comstock Act, which probably most people really doesn't know what that is, unless you did what I did, you got on Google. But, can you provide a short summary of what the Comstock Act is, why, and what it means relative to this discussion?
So, the Comstock Act, the Comstock Act is a very old federal law. I think 1893, if my memory is correct, is when it was first introduced.
Seventy-three.
Eighteen seventy-three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It has changed a lot over the years. It has been generally upheld by our courts. What the Comstock Act forbids, originally it forbid the use of the mails or common carriers for the distribution of obscenities, contraception materials, and abortion materials. Since then, the, the contraception part has been deleted from it, and I think the rest of it is still. So it prevents the, using the US mails to distribute essentially illegal things by mail.
Illegal or legal?
Well, illegal. So, it, for instance, prohibits the, the distribution of literature. So you couldn't, under the, under the Comstock Act before Amendment 3, you couldn't distribute in Missouri literature telling people where they could get an abortion, because abortion was illegal. Now abortion is legal, and so the way that they preserve the Comstock Act against some of the challenges is by saying it only limits the distribution and literature about illegal materials. So you could say, you could send out literature and say, "Here's where you can get a legal abortion," or "Here's where you can purchase materials." And as I read it, courts, and I, I'm no expert on this, but as I read it, it's, if the distribution of abortion pills, which is, I think, what we're talking about here, is only prohibited if they're illegal in the state where they're being received.
Hmm.
And then, you know, as I said, the RICO, which is the racketeer-influenced something, that's the anti-mafia law, allows a private cause of action for people who repeatedly violate certain federal laws, and Comstock Act is one of those. So that's why you have a private cause of action to enforce the Comstock Act. Any citizen right now could do that, under federal law.
With or without action by the city council?
With or without action by the city council.
Could you repeat? Go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, I was just going to ask Nathan, because obviously it's a complex issue. If, if we were to pass something like this, does it prevent anything further than what's already prevented? And if, if yes, is that within our right to do so?
So...
It may be specifically against the Comstock, if things being mailed.
So, I want to go back to what Attorney General, Assistant Attorney General who came here and spoke to y'all said. And what he said specifically was, that the Attorney General's opinion is that the city is not preempted from passing a law that is in compliance with state law.
Right.
So, no, it would not, it could not prohibit anything that is already permitted, or permit anything that's already prohibited. Because that would be beyond our authority. All it can do is copy what the state, and I guess the federal government are doing. And that's, that's kind of the way this is designed. It's just mimicking the federal law and giving a mechanism to enforce the federal law at the local level.
And does Amendment 3 permit the mailing of abortion pills? Like, does it specify into that detail?
It doesn't go into that.
So, conceptually, you're saying that on a federal level, you can say that these things are illegal. Generally, Missouri has said abortions are legal, but we're not, it doesn't specifically talk about, like, mailing abortion pills through the mail. So then you're down to a local level of, do we have a right to say, we're looking at this, saying, "We're not going to permit this in Rolla, because it's not specified on a state level?"
Yes. I think that's kind of a summary of what it does.
Say it again.
Yep. Yeah.
Let me write that.
Thank you, Nathan.
It sounded profound.
No, I'm tracking with you.
Yep, I am.
So, I don't know if I can. So, on a federal level, the abortion pills are being mailed. They're saying that this can't be done through Comstock. On the state level, they said generally abortions are legal, but they don't actually weigh in specifically on it being mailed through the US Postal Service. So on a local level, this would say, "In Rolla, you can't actually mail it." We're going to interpret this from a federal level, saying, "The state hasn't said whether you can or can't specifically do this." So, in Rolla, we're going to say, "No, you can't actually do this."
Based off the federal law?
Based off of federal interpretation.
Yes.
Well, yes, except, I would add, the state doesn't need, doesn't need to say that, because it's already a violation of federal law. So the state, I guess, could do what's being done here and create a state law that simply mimics the federal law. They just never have.
So as it stands today in Missouri, is it still illegal to mail abortion pills through the mail?
You know, that, that, I mean, I'm going to get all kinds of hate mail for whatever I say here.
Sorry.
As I interpret the law, right now, it is not illegal to mail those in Missouri.
In the state of Missouri?
In the state of Missouri.
Is it illegal in other states?
Yes.
So, how can Missouri, so were they not preemptive in that? That the federal law said, "Well, the states can decide this"?
So the case that overturned Roe versus Wade, what it actually said is, it kicks it back to the states to decide whether abortion is legal or not legal. And so right now, abortion is illegal in some states and legal in other states.
You give the power back to the states, and the states have made decisions on these things?
Right. So we have, the two things we've got going right now are Amendment 3, okay? And then, this case in Jackson County, where the court issued an injunction against most of Missouri's anti-abortion laws, because they violated Amendment 3.
And that's in Jackson County?
Yeah, but it's, it's applicable for statewide. It was, the state of Missouri was the defendant.
Sure.
So, right now, although, you know, I'm sure it will be appealed, but right now, those anti-abortion laws in Missouri, most of them, are on hold.
And the other states, though, we have a list of other states that have passed similar things.
Excuse me.
But the difference is those states haven't passed their version of Amendment 3.
New Mexico did.
So New Mexico has passed their version of Amendment 3.
HB 7.
And there are some cities or a city that is attempting to do something similar to this.
Yes.
Essentially, okay.
That doesn't mean it's going to prevail.
I understand. I'm just looking for other, what's happening other places.
It's, it's very difficult to compare municipal law from state to state, because they're very different.
Sure.
For instance, in Illinois, and I have no idea what the law is in Texas, but in Illinois, all cities are what we would call charter cities.
Okay.
Okay? Which means that they have all of the powers that the legislature could give them, except those powers the legislature has denied them. In Missouri, Rolla is what we call statutory city, or some people call it Dillon's Rule City, which is to say that we have only those powers that are given to us by the state.
Correct.
A huge, a huge difference when you're trying to compare...
So, if something like this were passed, and, how does someone challenge this? So, it goes to court, of course. Does it go to a Missouri Supreme Court? Like, how, or is it, it's a county versus Missouri sort of thing?
Well, some, someone would sue the city of Rolla and say that we did not have, probably did not have the authority to pass this, that it, we either didn't have the authority or we exceeded the authority that we did have, that therefore, or that what we passed violates the Constitution in some way, something like that.
And it's overturned?
And they would strike down our ordinance if they were correct.
Is something along the lines of damages, like, can that actually be a, a part of a suit on something like this?
Could be. And depending on how they brought it, you know, what most plaintiff's attorneys would try to do is construe it as what we call a 1983 action, a civil rights violation. And if they could, I'm not sure that that would work, but if you could, then they would get attorney's fees as well.
Now...
The attorney's fees that...
Question. What would they sue us over if we're not enforcing anything?
Well, the question would be whether or not we had the authority to pass the law. I mean, I don't know. It's hard, you're asking me to speculate, and I'll tell you, honestly, I don't want to sit here and tell people how to sue us.
Right. You're, you're not wrong. So, we'll end that line of questioning. Um, sorry, Nathan.
No, I'm, I yield the floor. It was just a line of questions I had.
Still muddy.
So, I, I actually have a question about the ACUL letter and the list of cities that have passed this. My question is about this, this is probably a Mark Lee question, because he's familiar with that, these other cities. So, in the ACLU letter, they did not cite a single court case that they have won across the country for potentially these other cities. So I'm assuming either that means they've sued and they've lost every case, or they haven't filed any cases. And I would really like an answer to that question from him, because I assume he's familiar with it.
This isn't a public hearing.
But it's a question.
That's her question.
He can answer the question.
We have legal counsel, thank you. And I don't need somebody blown in from 10 states away to give me legal counsel. So, Nathan, you can answer the question.
I, I did do research on that. There's only one case that I found specifically on this, which involves the city of Lubbock, Texas. And it's kind of a wishy-washy ruling, but, you know, they did, they did say that the city of, of, as I read the thing, they said the city of Lubbock does not have the authority to create a new cause of action, which is kind of where that case turned. I think that's where really all of this turns, if you want, in my opinion. Does the city, can we create cause, new causes of action?
Well, we just did with 42-313. We do a new cause of action every time we pass an ordinance.
No. So, that's not a cause of action, not a, what we would call a private attorney general. So, for instance, if, if you have been defrauded as a consumer, Attorney General of Missouri can bring a case against you. But the Missouri law also allows you to bring a case against those people, because it creates a cause of action. Otherwise, you're, you're limited to those causes of action. And, you know, a, a person, the way that this law works is a third person, all right, who doesn't, isn't necessarily affected by the violation, okay? They're not damaged in any way. They can still bring a case, or they don't have to show that they are somehow a party. It gives them standing, what we call standing, the right to sue that didn't exist. And you're right, the federal government creates that all the time, the state creates it all the time. Other than this instance, I'm not aware of any cities, certainly not in Missouri, ever creating a private cause of action.
So, Nathan, so, just want to make sure I understand this. So, the way that this is written is that I, the third-party observer, who isn't related to either the person who violated the law, in my opinion, or the person who was the recipient of illegal goods, just independent, right? I'm, I'm beyond the first degree of separation. I could bring suit.
Yes. That's, that's what a private cause of action is.
And are there any other, anything else in, in our city code, or in any city code in Missouri that you're aware of, that allows an uninjured third party to bring suit against... Yeah. At the arms line.
Third parties.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that in our...
We would be creating a, a whole new mechanism for enforcement, whole cloth, it's, that would be unique in the state.
Yes. The only cities in my mind that could do that would be a charter city, like St. Louis, Kansas City, or actually Jeff City's a charter city. The difference is, they're not limited to statutory powers. They have any power that the legislature could give them. And theoretically, the legislature could say, "Yes, we're going to allow cities to have, create private causes of action." Although, I want to reiterate, again, I'm not exactly sure how that would work, because the only place we could bring such a suit would be in the municipal court, which is woefully inadequate, a place to hear this kind of a case. I mean, no offense to anyone in the city, but I used to be a municipal prosecutor for many years, and municipal court is kind of the McDonald's of the judicial system. It's, it's, it's the light kind of stuff. It does, you know, traffic tickets, and, you know, the worst they might have is a DWI or an assault.
We wouldn't normally ask the municipal courts to interpret federal law and to interpret...
Municipal court doesn't have any discovery. There's no right to discovery in municipal court.
I believe this would go to a state court or a federal court.
I, I don't know how we could give jurisdiction to a federal or state court. I'm certain we can't give jurisdiction to a federal court. How, how would we have the ability to give jurisdiction to a state court? I just don't, I mean, I'm not saying you're wrong, but that would be something we would have to definitely, definitely sort out. How are these actions going to be brought? You know, are we going to change the jurisdiction of municipal court? They don't normally hear, they don't normally hear civil actions at all, which I think is different than, you know, the Texas, as I understand it, reading the Lubbock case. Texas, the, the municipal courts have a limited civil jurisdiction. In Missouri, the municipal courts are what we call quasi, quasi-criminal courts. Like I say, they only hear violations of ordinances.
I guess I'm going to go back to William's point, is, I don't think we've still answered the question, "Why are we doing this?" What is, what is out, what is out to be accomplished?
Well, we, we've had plenty of discussion, and I know that there's a couple of council members that would like to have some questions answered. Typically, when we have our city staff, when we have questions that we would like to ask, we call them up to the stand. I would like to call Mark Lee Dixon up to the stand, Mayor.
Are you asking for a legal answer?
For some clarification, because he's dealt with this.
We, they are not our attorneys.
I understand that.
We have an attorney.
I understand.
This is not a public hearing. They're welcome to speak on citizen comments. But, but we're not here to get legal advice from somebody other than our attorney.
I'd like to make a motion to have Mark Lee Dixon come up to the stand.
Josh will second.
I would like a discussion. So...
There's a motion on the floor that needs to be voted on. Follow pardon for procedure, guys.
All right, settle down, please, for a sec. There's a motion of second, and Megan's entitled to lead a discussion. Go ahead, Megan.
So, a few meetings back, we were talking about a very, a very complex issue, and I had asked for someone to come to the stand that had firsthand...
Are you asking for a legal answer?
For some clarification, because he's dealt with this.
Okay, we, they are not our attorneys.
I understand that.
We have an attorney.
I understand.
This is not a public hearing, they're welcome to speak at, on citizen comments, but, but we're not here to get legal advice from somebody other than our attorney.
I'd like to make a motion to have Mark Lee Dixon come up to the stand.
Josh will second.
I would like a discussion. So, um-
There's a motion on the floor that needs to be voted on. Follow pardon for procedure, guys.
All right, settle down, please, for a sec. There's a motion and a second, and Megan's entitled to lead a discussion. Go ahead, Megan.
So, a few meetings back, we were talking about a very, a very complex issue, and I had asked for someone to come to the stand that had firsthand knowledge, that had input that they wanted to give, and they were denied that. So, let's just remember that we have to be fair with everything. I, I don't mind hearing from Mark Lee Dixon, I think it would be great, but remember that the next time that you shun or deny another individual to come up to the stand and speak.
When did I do that?
The concern I have is we're, we're calling a person up here.
And who? What, what meeting?
It was Lannis Hours, when she wanted to speak.
I did not do any such thing.
Well, maybe it was a meeting that weren't here.
Maybe you weren't here.
I led the meeting, and I was asked for, to lead the meeting, and I led it in the way that I felt was appropriate.
Madam-
I didn't do it to deny anyone access to our public hearing.
Madam, it was the prior meet-
Okay. It's not relevant, I, I see what you're saying, Megan, but let's stay on point.
I'm just saying, let's be fair to you.
But here's, here's the concern-
There's a motion and a second.
But I'm, conversation still. I don't feel like it's proper to bring an attorney up to have a conversation with us on the hope that they will defend us if we go to court. My question to my fellow council members is, are you willing to pass an ordinance that's going to put us in court and put us in a position where the city of Rolla is in a significant peril based on something? Or should we be lobbying to the state to do this at their level? So, that's my discussion, I understand, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion and the second?
I just want to reiterate that this is supposed to be a discussion among council members to decide whether or not we're going to go forward with a, considering an ordinance or not. The whole point of this discussion this evening is to, to discuss amongst ourselves whether or not we want to even consider an ordinance. I personally believe that the discussion should remain amongst ourselves, and if, if some members of council believe that they need extra information in order to be able to make a decision as to whether or not they even want to entertain an ordinance, then please, by all means, do that outside this meeting. We all have email, we all have phones, we all have plenty of, you know, people are not shy about contacting us.
The right way to do that, if somebody wants a legal interpretation, is to send it to our legal counsel, and he can reach out if he feels appropriate to other legal counsel.
Well, we actually directed him to reach out, and as far as I know, he hasn't reached out.
He did.
When?
On Friday, I called Mr. Mitchell.
So you had two months to reach out, and you waited till the very last minute?
Yes.
Well-
How is that professional?
And we didn't direct you to get ahold of Jonathan Mitchell.
Yes, you did.
We directed you to get ahold of Mark Lee Dixon and Brian Westbrook.
I'm not sure if Mark Lee Dixon is even an attorney.
He's not.
Not, no. So, the question was, you know, I was supposed to call and, and try and sort out this issue of whether or not this law has been preempted, all right, which is an attorney question. I, I wouldn't call a non-attorney to ask him a legal question, in fact, it would be illegal to do so.
Look, that's not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, is you had two months to do it, and you waited till the last minute, and that was very unprofessional.
I, and I apologized for that last time.
All right. But again, we're asking for Mark Lee to come up here, he's done this across the country, this is what he does. We're asking for some clarification, there's a motion on the floor. That's all we're asking.
One second, any further discussion?
I guess it's just whether, I mean, I, I don't want to dispute about the, the last meeting, but is this something that can legally be done? Like, we were hearing a lot of opinions, Megan's like, well, I tried that last time, which I, I appreciate that, and it was like, well, this isn't really the place or the, the time for that. So, again, I, I would be interested-
I think it depends how you want to handle it. If, if you're going to listen to whatever the gentleman says, and you're going to take that into consideration as legal advice, then I'm going to tell you, you're dead ass wrong. You should be taking legal advice from your legal counsel. If you just want to get his opinion, and you're able to self-discipline and say, that's a nice opinion, but I'm not taking it under consideration, then that's fine, too.
My thought is that they're asking for him to come up so he can explain it better, since this ordinance is something that they presented, not necessarily council, so I don't mind hearing.
But is, is this the standard for, I know this is off this exact topic, but is this the standard going forward, that if we make a motion and a second, that if we want to call someone up to the stand, do we have, is, is that how it is done?
You control your meetings.
Okay.
We, as council persons-
Pandora's box is just wide open.
That's what I'm asking.
Get ready. Anytime we don't like what somebody at City Hall says, we're going to bring in an expert.
Fine, I remember multiple people saying, that's not appropriate, no, 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 so, but-
Okay, there's a motion and a second, still needs to be active on.
So, for me, I think that I'm comfortable, I, I, I'm, I'm tracking what you're saying here, I'm comfortable with hearing what anyone has to say in the citizens' communications, and I don't think there's going to be any action on this done tonight.
Yeah, this is only on, this is only on here as a discussion on ordinance.
So, my, I, I'll be a no on this, not, and I totally respect Victoria and Josh, where they're coming for them, but I don't want to set a precedent on this, and, but it's not that I don't want to hear, it's just I don't want to set a precedent, that's where I'm at.
I'm in the same place as Rob.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
In the, the, just clarifying, the, the motion is just to call Mark to the stand for questions, is all we're, the motion's more.
For clarification, yes.
And a yes would be, yes, we want him to come up here, and a no would be, no, we don't want him to come up here.
During this section, he can still come up during citizen communication, though.
Yes.
And, and my opinion is, is this is not going to be resolved tonight, we're not going to have an up and down vote tonight, so we're not in a hurry to do this, so if you want information, we've got time to get information, so.
If you want legal information-
Right.
It should be directed to our legal counsel.
Yes.
And Nathan then can answer it, if he's out of his element, he can go seek other opinions. But that's where legal advice should be coming from.
I don't, I didn't really think legal, I didn't think it would be legal advice, I just, you know, it's good to hear more about it, since the ordinance is something that they-
It'll be packaged as legal advice, they're not stupid people.
Wow. When, when I look at this, you know, I see where-
You're not giving them an opportunity.
I see where several cities, you know, have passed this successfully, so I do, I, I want to listen to all sides, because I have a lot of people in, I mean, we have a lot of people in the city that are for this, and, you know, we have some people that are not for it, so-
It's interesting when you say what they're for for, because I could line up 10 people, I can line up 50 people in this town, and the reality of it is, they have no idea what it is that we're really talking about.
Right, and that's why I brought up the enforcement side of it, so people could hear more-
This is being framed as, you're for abortion or you're against abortion. That's not what's in front of us, folks. Our opinions and their opinions on that subject matter is not the decision in front of you. The decision in front of you is whether to, or not, to put an ordinance out there, which you don't intend to enforce, you probably can enforce, and you're going to give somebody a right that they already have. That's what's in front of you, not whether or not you believe in abortion.
Right, yeah, no, I, I agree that it's, it's something that, when people see it, you know, it's something that if they look at it and say, if, if this was an option, because it is a federal law, to save life in any possible way, then let's, let's look through those avenues and see what's there, and then you have the other side where, you know, um-
I want to finish the thought, though, Megan, goes back to where I started this conversation.
I'd like to call a point of order.
You can call it, and I'm going to keep talking.
No, you're not.
I'm going to finish my sentence.
I'm calling a part, I'm calling a point of order, there is a motion and a second on the floor, you have the authority to help us proceed, not to give your opinion.
I'm presiding over this meeting, and we are still in discussion phase. My point to finish it, Megan, is that I don't think, we do want public opinion, but the onus is on us to be sure that the public fully understands what's in front of them.
Right, and that's why we should ask-
And the whole reason why I'm trying to have this conversation is, I don't think as a body, we clearly understand what's in front of us, and how can we expect the public to give a worthwhile opinion on something like that? So that's what this is about.
Yeah, and that's where, on my point-
But then Matthias's point, there was a motion, there was a second, is there any more discussion?
Nope, I'm good.
If not, roll call vote.
Fredley?
No.
Kessinger?
No.
Penner?
Yes.
Reven?
No.
Roman?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Turman?
Yes.
Bulch? Johnson?
Yes.
Han?
No.
Five Eyes? Five Nays?
But the gentlemen are very welcome to speak at the later session. So we whipped that horse, we still haven't figured out the why, but is there any more questions on behalf of council?
Can I ask Nathan a question? So I go back to, you probably answered this, but I just want to make sure I actually understand what's going on. So, my mind's stuck on the, the mailing of abortion pills or other items, if someone does have an abortion pill mailed to their home, and, like, we passed this, they have something mailed to their home, you talked about, like, you have to go through discovery, it's like, who brings them up on a charge? Like, what, what's the means to do something in that case?
So, if you believe that someone had violated the Comstock Act, I'm going to rephrase your question a little bit.
Please.
If you believe someone violated the Comstock Act, under this ordinance, anyone, anyone could file a lawsuit on it.
And then it becomes a, the debate of if in Missouri, or really if in Rolla, like, we're saying you can't do this, in a state that says you can do this, in a country that says you can do this, but maybe not directly to Missouri.
All, all of that would be battled out in the court, whether, whether they're really a violation or not.
And again, the Comstock Act is, isn't that it, that abortion, that sending abortion pills is illegal, is that sending abortion pills is illegal if it's illegal in the place where they're going to be received. So if they are legal in Missouri, then sending them to Missouri would be legal. But again, that's, you know, some, that's some next level interpretation of the Comstock Act, that I'm sure a municipal judge doesn't want to have to try to, to sort through when he's sorting through traffic tickets and, and, you know, whether or not somebody's grass is too high.
Josh, you brought this before, City Council, is your intention to have the city be involved in the groundbreaking lawsuit that, that will decide this issue for all of Missouri, or what's the-
My, my intention is to make sure that Amendment 3 works within the confines of the Comstock Act, which is a federal statute.
Why would we not do that at the state level, and why, why wouldn't you do that?
Why couldn't we do it at the local level?
I just think it's wholly inappropriate to do that at the local level.
Well, we have that same power, we're just at a local level.
Don't we already have ordinances that say the same thing that are derived from state and federal law on crime specifically, though? We've just taken their, what they've said, and brought it down to our level, we're doing the same thing here.
Now, the only place where, in, in our, in our city code, where we specifically make mention of CFR is with, with respect to granting franchises for telecommunications entities. That's the only place in city code where we mention CFRs at all.
I also said state, not just federal.
So the only place in, in city code where we, where we specifically mention state laws is when we're granting authority to the police department to enforce all state laws.
So there's precedent for federal and state?
Yes, so, for instance, your traffic code is literally pulled straight out of the statute. So yes, can the city pass something that the state has already passed? Generally, yes, there are some exceptions to that, for instance, the city is prohibited from regulating firearms, even if the state, you know, even if you, even if you have an ordinance that's identical to the state. They just passed this hands-free texting thing, and that, unusual, unusual state legislation, because it specifically says that cities can't regulate it at all. So all the cities, including Rolla, that have existing ordinances, because cities were the first to do this before the state, will now have to repeal their ordinances, because the state statute says we can't have that ordinance.
So, okay, one second, let's, let's go back to the firearm comment, so you, I'm sorry, re-say that before I ask my question.
Okay, let me, let me put it a different way. The city of Rolla has the ability to pass things that are specifically authorized by statute, all right? And the statute, or which can be reasonably interpreted from statute, okay? That statute language, you know, is fairly broad, you know, so I, I think that this could come under that in some ways. In terms of generally regulating it, I think that we fall, we have the ability to regulate health, but we can't regulate things even if they're authorized by statute, even if there's a, a similar statute, there are some things we can't have an identical statute to. Firearms, apparently, hands-free phones, there may be-
We, I'm, I'm sorry, you're saying-
Yeah, it is kind of cute.
We can't have an identical ordinance to state statute on firearms?
That is correct, we cannot regulate firearms except at a very tiny level.
Then why do we have an ordinance on it? I mean, in the last two, last, I think it was the last two years, we just updated, updated that ordinance to reflect what's in state statute, because it was outdated.
That's on using, we, we can regulate shooting, you know, we can prohibit you from shooting people, but we can't regulate whether people can carry firearms or not.
Okay, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
So I'll give one last comment. As I, as I look at this, I don't think the answer of the why has been clearly answered. This issue is fraught with all kinds of sub-issues. I don't think this is a position, whether somebody's for or against abortion, that's not the decision in front of you. And I think the cause is very noble. I, I understand why we would want to look at this, I really do. But folks, where I come from, we have a couple of very savvy attorneys, and I say that as a compliment, so don't take that as a negative, is all. One comes up from Texas three times, one comes down from St. Louis, we got somebody from the Attorney General's office that comes down and sticks their nose in the thing here. I think that, and nobody else in the state has done this, so what does that tell me? Tells me we're about to be used, and that's the part that I really feel uncomfortable of, we're going to be used. So with that, what does council want to do?
I make a motion to have a first reading.
Turn on a second.
There's no ordinance, there's no ordinance to read.
So what are we discussing?
Whether or not you want a ordinance, either prepared or using the sample that's in front of you, whether you want to use that specifically.
Okay, so we're in discussion, so let's talk about that then. Pages 6A3, I just want to point this out to the public, since everybody's here and listening, through 6A7, these pages were originally for the ordinance that I drafted back in November. This has nothing to do with what we are talking about tonight, so those are tossed to the side, don't know why they're in the packet.
Yep.
Now, going back to this ordinance, there were some concerns that were brought up amongst discussion with the public, matter of fact, one of them is here tonight. I would like to say that this that we're discussing, that is in the packet, is not what I emailed you on December 18th, it is not what I emailed John and Mayor last Wednesday. So I gave the council an updated ordinance, same language, but there were minor differences when it comes to the chapter headings, so instead of, where am I at? Instead of like 235 dot- Instead of like 235.004 for affirmative offenses, we, that was actually changed and sent to you guys, it was changed to 43.004. So a lot of little nuances like that, but I would also like to add some language to this, to make a little bit of clarification that this is not, and will not have anything to do with the healthcare of women. So with that being, with that being said, if we're discussing, I would like to add in, under, let me find it again, so everybody, and I've got 12 or 13 copies sitting over here. Under affirmative defenses, I would like to add in.
Hey Josh?
Yeah.
Sorry, point of order, since the ordinance hasn't been first read, it's not open for discussion, and it's not open for amendment.
Okay, perfect. Well, I would still like to add something at some point.
Well, I mean, if, if we as council, I mean, the point, the, the agenda item is to discuss whether or not we want to entertain an ordinance. And so if, if we, through the course of our discussion, decide that we want to entertain an ordinance, then that ordinance would be brought to council, and then we would consider it, we'd give it a first reading, we'd give it amendments, we'd go through the whole rigmarole, but the discussion here today is strictly whether or not we want to bring an ordinance before council to consider.
Perfect, then I'll make a motion to bring this back at the next city council meeting, an updated ordinance that I have sitting here.
I, I got a lot in my packet, so just, which one are you asking us to bring back?
Did, Victoria, did you not have a motion? I thought you made a motion for something a little bit ago, but maybe I confused.
Mateus, second.
So, so I should just withdraw that motion?
Yeah, that sounds good.
But was there an earlier motion at the very beginning of this discussion?
There was a, there was a motion to open discussion.
Is that the motion?
Yeah.
Lots of motions.
So Josh?
Yes.
So all we're discussing is whether or not we want to consider an ordinance.
Yeah, your motion, I think, is at the next council meeting to have in front of council to discuss an ordinance, a Rolla ordinance.
And?
Right?
An ordinance for a first reading, yes.
Yeah, okay, so in this packet, which one is it? Just so we're clear.
Well, none, none of the above, so, and that's what I'm trying to say, so pages 6A3 through 6A7 don't even need to be in the packet, that has nothing to do with this ordinance. That's number one, number two, the updated version that I sent you on December 18th is not in this packet. So you actually gave us the first ordinance from November 18th.
Okay, so you want council to vote to bring back an ordinance that they haven't seen yet?
Well, it, it's all the same language, it's all the same language.
As what, as what?
Yeah, the headings, so, so the council can still read everything.
So give me a page, 6A9, yes. Is that what you want us to bring back in the form of a city ordinance?
With updates that?
With, I have all the updates, and I've sent them to you twice.
Okay, but they're not in the packet, or that's what this crossed-out language is?
No, it's not really a crossed-out language, I think that's just. It's, see, like here it says Chapter 456, but then it says 256, but really it should be 256.
So we're cutting and pasting again?
No. It's a cleanup is what Josh has, I think.
Yes, I have a, I have a cleanup version.
And in fairness, when they first introduced this, they said that the number is wrong.
Okay, so for council to vote on us bringing back for a first reading in two weeks, council should be looking at 6A9 to make that decision, is that, that's a question?
Knowing that there are some tweaks that have already been suggested.
But that's the process.
Yeah.
That's the process that council can.
And then I can get with you guys in the meantime, yes.
Substantially.
Well, yeah.
Substantially.
No, 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 timeout. You shouldn't be getting us, with us in the meantime, to go through those tweaks, the body has to do that.
Well, we're not discussing, we're just discussing if we're entertaining an ordinance. So at the next meeting, we would bring back an updated ordinance for completion to actually discuss.
For discussion, tweaking, whatever you want to do.
Get its first reading and amendments from there.
Are, so are we creating an ordinance?
I think your, I think the answer is yes, I think that's what you're telling us.
Okay, so.
An ordinance based on your examples.
Yes, I've got that right here then.
Okay, so that's what's in front of council?
And I've got 12 of them.
There's a motion, was there a second?
Penner will second.
Okay, so a motion and second.
Discussion?
Well, hold on, just I want to get the mic, make sure I understand the motion right. For the city staff to develop, based on Josh's examples, an ordinance to bring back for council to start to review with the intent of having a first reading. That's what you're asking?
Yes.
Not examples, example, he, he's saying that this one, the first one, is not example.
Example. Okay, but council is telling us in two weeks, bring back an ordinance based on whatever Josh has provided. Okay, that's what's in front of you, discussion.
I just, so we're, we're supposed to be discussing if we want to proceed with an ordinance, not, let's do an ordinance based on some random spots that Josh has approved, right? Or that Josh wants to?
That's what was, tonight was about.
Okay, so it is about just, because my thought process is that we were voting on if we would like to explore the ordinance that these gentlemen have provided, not necessarily what Josh has already submitted once before to legal counsel, and they said that it wasn't appropriate.
I think it's one in the same, though. No.
No, so the original one that I put in, we're not even discussing. That, that was made clear on the first time.
Let's break this down in steps, so tonight was to have a discussion so we all understood as much as we can about the topic. The action tonight is to direct city staff to either A, drop it, or B, bring back an ordinance, that's the fork in the road.
Except that he made a motion, which creates, which creates option C, just to discuss this ordinance, to remake this ordinance.
So are we in the discussion piece of this, can I, can I interject real quick here? Yes. I, I think it's important, I want to ask my fellow colleagues on the city council, are we going to come back with something that we're going to pass? Are we going to spend a lot of time just talking about something that, quite frankly, is a, is a challenging issue for society? I don't think there's anyone on either side that feels comfortable with this topic. And I don't think it's a place for city council to do this. I'm going to implore you to drop this subject and to remove it from our conversations. You can do whatever you like, I realize that. I'm not doing it because I feel one specific way, please keep decorum here, I, I mean, I would appreciate it. I, I'm, quite frankly, I'm on the other side of this issue, but I don't feel like this is the place for this issue to be decided. And I would implore my fellow council members to drop this issue and look, and pressure the individuals in Jefferson City to work on this. It's imperative that we don't become the test case, that's what I'm worried about. I don't think that's what your constituents voted for you to be, is the test case, and I don't think that's what we should be. So that's my point of discussion, I realize you have the right to vote wherever you like, but keeping this going only prolongs what could eventually be a no anyway.
In many ways, I agree with Matt, from my position on, on pro-life. My thought of going into tonight was mostly from that of a legal stance. It, it makes me uncomfortable to move forward with chewing on an ordinance, although I'm intrigued by it. I wanted to know if there's any real teeth in, in putting time and effort into this. And I, I, there's just so much grayish sort of area in this, and probably the only area I would maybe divert from, from Mr. Fredley just said, I, I don't mind being the, the test subject in Missouri if there's actually something worth doing here. If it actually does something, if it actually accomplishes something, I, you know, there's always a first, you know, rarely do you want to be the first one, but, you know, someone sometimes has to courageously step out and do that if that's the wise, if we feel that that's the right thing to do. I just don't know if I'm convinced of what gets accomplished. I, I keep trying to find the right question to ask of, of what this does from a legal standpoint, and, you know, who files this lawsuit, and what occurs, does it, you know, can we, can we in Rolla say, you know, you, you as a healthcare provider can't, can't give abortions even though Missouri has?
I don't think the bill says that, doesn't prohibit, this bill does not prohibit abortions.
Right.
This bill only has to deal with the distribution of abortion materials.
Through US mail.
Yep, and even that's not clear to me. After all of this discussion, that's not even clear to me. And I hesitate, I hesitate, as Nathan is pointing out also, thank you for your words, it's helpful to me because I feel very similarly. It's just, it's not clear to me, and if it's not clear to me, then it's very challenging to throw that support behind it, although I'm passionate about one side of this issue.
So, so does this do anything that a good attorney can't do on his own?
I'm sorry, what?
Does this do anything that a good attorney can't do on his own?
I'm not, I guess I'm not, I hear your question, I'm not understanding.
So does this give another tool, or a, a tool out there that, you know, if, if, back to what Bill was saying, Megan, I'm going to sue you, you're going to sue whatever on that side, does this give a tool that is not already in existence for, for Bill to sue Megan?
Yes.
What we were talking about earlier?
Yes.
So are you going to?
The private, the private right of action is.
You're not an attorney, so I respect your opinion, but I think Nation, Nathan should be answering that question.
I'm not sure Nathan can answer that, I mean, the, the RICO is out there. I think the difference between RICO and this, is RICO would require multiple violations, while this would require only a single violation.
But it's a violation that already stands?
Yes, I mean, it's, the Comstock Act is what it is, you know, so that's already federal law, and it prohibits what it prohibits.
And that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, this doesn't change the Comstock Act at all.
So if attorney wants, if, if William's attorney wants to sue Megan, because he, William thinks Megan did something wrong, that ability is already there without this.
We already put that.
Yeah, and Megan knows, they both know, I'm just.
Not you, a different Megan.
The evil.
Yeah.
That ability is already there, that's, I'm trying to figure out what ability beyond what's already there is being established here.
Kevin, did you know the Comstock, Comstock Act existed before we started discussing this?
No, but that has nothing to do with this.
I think that brings some of the whys, because people don't know this is, this is the law. Some of it's just bringing a light to show people what they can do under the law, and what they cannot do under the law.
I don't know that I agree with that, but I see what, I see what you're saying, I don't agree with that, but I see what you're saying.
So could we restate the motion again, what it, what it was again, just for clarity?
To come back in two weeks with an ordinance for a first reading?
So a yes vote would continue the discussion, and a no vote would essentially end this discussion and remove this topic?
Yes.
Correct, thank you.
So there's a, there's a last point of clarity, if I may, and this is for Nathan, and also Nathan, Nathan squared. All right, so you were, you were, I was tracking along with some of your discussion as far as the sending abortion pills. And this kind of started making sense to me, I was like, okay, I, I'm understanding why you would want to do this. Now you're saying that Amendment Three does not codify specifically abortion pills, but does codify in the Missouri constitution abortion itself. So it's a legal opinion as to whether that, the abortion pill fits in that or not, please help me understand.
Okay, so I, I think as Josh has said several times, that Missouri can't change federal law. So Amendment Three, whatever it does, it doesn't change federal law, it doesn't eliminate the Comstock Act, okay? Whatever, whatever it does, it doesn't do that. So it regulates abortion within the extent that Missouri can regulate abortion.
Okay, so, so does that change, okay, so federal law says that you can't send abortion pills to a state that is illegal for abortion.
Right.
But is it specifically speak to states that have allowed abortion? Does it specifically speak to that? Is there, are there court cases that have solidified that position? Or is that opinion, and, and forgive me for my ignorance, I just really want to understand.
Fair question, it is opinion based on my reading of, of the cases. I don't know that there's a case out there that specifically says if a state has legalized abortion, that you can, you can now send abortion pills. They have, there have been cases that said that about other things, that the Comstock Act regulates.
Okay, I understand.
The Comstock Act is generally used, actually in child pornography is the biggest thing that it's used for. And in most of its history, it was about regulating obscenity, it still is.
Well, I think one of the, one of the unfortunate things about this discussion is, and from the nearly 100 emails, texts, and everything, out of every issue that we've had, I've not had more feedback. I've been in this chair four years, and I've seen more, just this afternoon, than any, anything that we've had before us. And everybody's very passionate, I'm very passionate, I'm a very passionate pro-life, full disclosure, but, but I think the big misconception that we're dealing with here is that we're not tearing down abortion law by this ordinance. I mean, this, I mean, this is not, because that's, a lot of my emails are, please, you know, save the life of the unborn, or please, you know, maintain the, you know, I mean, so it's, so our narrow question here is not really that question. I'm just establishing that.
I, I agree with that.
Oh, okay, well, your look looked like you were disagreeing, so.
Oh, no, not even yet.
So I just want to make clear, now for me, looking at this issue, I'm tracking with what Matt's saying here, I don't want us to go down this road another, you know, and hope deferred makes the heart sick. So I don't want one side of this issue to think that we're going to put a flag in the ground if that's not really what's going to happen. And I agree with that. But this session has given me more questions than it really has answers. And although I, I thought I had a pretty good view of this, I, I think I don't. And so I don't want to just drag this thing on, but I, I don't know that I fully, I don't think I fully have this. I don't know, maybe, I'm a slow processor, I guess, maybe I have to think about it a little bit more and stew on it a little bit, but, you know, so, so for me, it's, it's, it's a hard, it's a hard question, because I don't want us just to go down this road. But I also don't want to just eliminate out a hand at this point, because I don't think I have all the information I need.
I, I feel this exact same way, I am, I mean, for me, you know, I am, and it's very known, I am very pro-life. I know that, you know, I've gotten emails from both sides. I think I probably have gotten more people that are wanting to pursue this than not. But I, I would like to know more, I would like to see if there's not so much gray, because there's just so much unknown. If there's, if there is all this gray and all this unknown, then I don't want to waste, you know, time on it. But I also don't want to come back to the next meeting with an ordinance for a first reading. I think that.
Yeah.
Agreed.
We need to find out more.
Let's ask.
From there, it's, it's a big.
Can we table? I mean, I don't know if table's the right word.
Let, let's ask, what is it that you? Look, I'm walking away tonight feeling I accomplished what I wanted to accomplish, and that is to have this discussion. But again, I'm going to come back to a point, whether you're pro-life or pro-choice, what's in front of you is not going to change that. So again, I keep coming back to the why, what are we trying to do and why? It's not about who's right and who's wrong, or whether you're pro-choice or pro-life. What is it that you want to do?
I said that at the beginning, and that is to make Amendment Three work within the confines of the Comstock Act, within the city limits of Rolla. So if I may, Mayor, where, where, and I've already stated. So, if I may, Mayor, where, and I've already stated, I'll be very quick with this, but my wife, when she has, when, when she gets information, she's just like a, a machine gun. She'll spit out answers just like left and right. Me, I'm a Monday morning quarterback guy. That's just the way I am. I have to think about things, and I've had a lot of information I really need to think about. So, I don't want to come back with an, an ordinance next time, but I still don't, I don't want to say goodbye to the issue necessarily. I just, I would like some time to, to settle with the information. That's just where I'm at with it.
If you want more information, then the question is, how best to quantify, qualify those questions and get the answers?
Well.
And I would think, you know, again, this is a messy process, but if you do choose to come back with an ordinance, that would be the vehicle then, that you would ask those questions and pick it apart, decline it, whatever you want to do. But if you just want to think about it for two weeks, and then we come back here in two weeks and have the same discussion, and again, there's some precedent, we, we've done this before. I couldn't resist.
When?
So, what is it that we want to do in two weeks? Everybody slept on it, we came back, and how is the conversation gonna be any different?
Well, so, sorry. Well, as I say, we obviously have a fairly full house of people that will probably be speaking. I'm intrigued to hear what they have to say in part. A, a lot of these things tend to be more emotion, belief, structure-based, but, you know, there, you know, could be healthcare professionals who've read through things that they're looking at. It's like, you know the unintended consequences of doing this? Those are the same things that I, I would be curious to know with the gentleman that, that came in, what, what they would have to say. So.
Public opinion is critical, and if we're gonna go down this path, there's gonna have to be public hearings for people to weigh in. But look, folks, your responsibility as councilpeople, when you get somebody asking you that's either pro-life or pro-choice, you need to look them in the eye and say, that's not what this question is about. You know, you can tell me you're pro-life, you can tell me you're pro-choice, but that's not what's in front of the city council. That onus is on you folks to do that. Otherwise, we're just gonna have a thousand people come through, tell us they're pro-life or pro-choice, and we're gonna sit here, what do we do? Make sure we get input on what it is that's in front of us to decide. That's what I'm suggesting, so.
And I just, I just want to state, for the record, I have been personally on pro-life, and I have been since the age of consent. So, since I've been old enough to form an opinion on the matter. From natural, from conception to natural death, the full Catholic definition. I've also donated money to the Pregnancy Resources Center, because I believe in the work that they do, not just in, in helping to prevent abortions, but in the care that they provide for the women that they help, and for the families that they help. They do great work, they genuinely do. But I still don't understand what problem this ordinance would attempt to resolve. And, and that's where I'm continually hung up, is what problem is this trying to solve? And how does it, how does it get us closer to resolving that problem? And, so, to Matt's point, to Nathan's point, I don't think that there's anything that's going to come of further discussion of this. And I'm, you know, I'm, I don't think that we should entertain an ordinance. I don't think that we should go on further, just where I am personally.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second to bring back an ordinance, but, so we're still in discussion.
Can we repeat that, just because it had to do with sections of this? Lori, do you care to restate it, just for everybody's clarification?
What I have is a motion to bring back an ordinance for first reading in two weeks.
Yeah, but what, on, on what basis?
He said a something, or a certain section.
You're gonna have to reference something, so we know what we're doing on that.
Is, is there, ask question?
Just give me the title of it, or whatever.
Requiring compliance with federal abortion laws.
Okay, that should be part of the motion, Lori.
An ordinance requiring compliance with federal laws be brought back in two weeks for a first reading.
Okay, so, a little bit of my discomfort is, even though it may not be very different, it's different than what we're looking at.
Yes.
Is there anything that's prohibiting, I mean, does, does Councilman Roman have the right to submit and say, I want this brought up, that document, not going through us, not having a vote? He presents that to you guys in between now and the next meeting, saying, I want this brought up for consideration?
No, that's not gonna happen. Josh is not gonna, no, Josh is not gonna come to City Hall and tell us, this is what I want, and this is what I don't want. The body has to decide that.
But we've not seen that document. I'm saying, can he bring that up for us to see, so it's presented in our packet next time? Well, I, I'm saying it wouldn't be in my hands to vote it up or down. If he just withdraws his app, his motion, and sends it to you guys and says, I want this brought for consideration with the refined document, with all, everything correct, that lets us look at a clean copy, and then we actually just have a discussion based off that, and we're not doing some preemptive vote tonight on a document, what's making me uncomfortable is I, I, I mean, conception of documents floating around. But it's not what I'm holding right here that I've made notes on.
I think you have two decisions to make, going back to Matt's point. I think the first decision is, do you or do you not want to develop an ordinance? That's a yes or a no. Don't waste your time, my time, the public's time. It's a yes or no answer. If the answer to that is yes, then the second motion should be to bring back a particular document. But it's time to, you're at that fork in the road. You want to keep talking about it, or you don't want to talk?
But you're asking me to make a motion to vote to see something that isn't what I'm looking at?
That's not what I'm advising you. What I'm advising you.
He's just telling you his concerns as far as.
But that's my concerns of, I want, I would want to see that before having to vote to.
Then vote no, well.
But that doesn't.
Well, then somebody will come back and maybe make a, a different motion, but, but that's the motion on the floor. I didn't make it.
Yeah.
I was asking for clarification, someone asked illegal, can he withdraw his motion and just present it to us and say, I want this brought for consideration at the next meeting? And it's the clean draft that we can look at and consider in that time?
Say, yes, any council person can make a proposal to all the other council members.
That's what I was curious of. So, like the voting up or down, like he doesn't need our vote to have us look at a clean version document at the next meeting? Correct?
No.
I think there's some value in the council having a consensus opinion.
Of a document we've not seen?
Of a course of action.
Okay.
That city administration is being asked to take.
I'm only verbalizing what I'm.
We don't, we don't work for any one councilperson. We work for the body. So, the body has to decide, is this something you want to talk about? And the answer to that, to Will's point, to Matt's point, that's a yes or a no, folks.
You work, you, you work for each, all of us as a body, and then also each of us individually. Simultaneously, Mayor.
Okay, I can't believe that.
Can we just take a straw, just take a straw poll?
No, 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 we're gonna take a vote.
Josh?
We're gonna take a vote.
I'm sorry, could you, would you consider withdrawing and do what Nathan's suggesting?
Yeah.
I was just asking a question.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know if we actually needed to do a vote up or down?
So, you want me to withdraw? I'm just, just want to clarify, your, your, your concern.
I'm not speaking for everyone else, I'm speaking for what my discomfort is with me, with, I, I, I would lean towards voting no because I've not seen it, I'd want to.
Roger that.
I would vote no because I haven't seen it. And that's what I was stating to you.
So, we're, we're looking to bring back an ordinance to, again, to discuss in two weeks, but we can use this one as consideration, is what you're saying?
How's that different than what you've said the first?
No, I'm, I'm saying you withdraw your motion, then you just present it, saying, I want this brought up at the next agenda meeting, if that's what you're wanting to accomplish.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll withdraw my motion then.
So, since he's withdrawn, I'd like to make a motion to close this topic and end discussion, and finish with this, and not bring it up to the next council meeting.
I second.
Oh, that'd be done.
Yes, you can close it.
I want to ask.
Motion to close.
I'd like to ask Nathan.
You can certainly, certainly close this discussion, end this topic, and I think you could probably say it won't be brought up at the next meeting. That would, I don't think you have the ability to say it'll never be brought up in the future, because the current council can't bind future councils.
So, my motion was to close discussion on this topic. And there's a second.
And I second.
Okay. I think that's the logical first step, to be honest with you. But, I don't know. How do we, how do we vote on which motion we voted on first?
There's only one motion.
His motion was withdrawn.
So, the motion.
So, a yes vote now closes the discussion for a period of time?
For now, yeah.
For now, okay, so motion, there's a second, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Chairman?
No.
False?
No.
Grevin?
Yes.
Roman?
No.
Steen?
No.
Kessinger?
No.
Penner?
No.
Pahn?
Yes.
Fredley?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Three eyes.
Okay, so we voted to keep talking about it. Now, do you want to make your motion?
There's no motion.
No, he's not making a motion, he's gonna present it to you, and then he can.
Move on.
Present it.
What is he presenting to me?
Well, he can do that, whatever he wants to do later.
Yeah, whenever, I, I can give everyone a copy later.
There's nothing more to discuss tonight.
Later or never, or however.
Yeah, whatever he wants to do.
Three weeks from now.
So, they closed discussion on it, they get personal.
Wait, so the discussion's still open?
Yeah.
That's how I understand it.
Okay, so, I'm gonna go back to what I said about us reacting to one particular council's or two particular council's opinion. If we go that route, and he's gonna bring it back under council comments, and he's gonna ask the body, do you or do you not want to do this? Or, you as a body could make a decision here, which is what I was trying to get at, and decide as a body, do you want it on the agenda for the next meeting?
And just to clarify what this would be is, what Josh has, what we have in the packet under Roman numeral six, eight, nine, through fifteen or sixteen, was the original draft. Josh has edited that, for the most part, but it's virtually this document with some editing. That's the document that you're proposing that we take up.
Affirmative. For first reading. If the majority of the council wants to do that, then make a motion as a body to formally bring that back, and we put it on the agenda.
I don't, I don't necessarily want something brought back that's been carved into, no offense, Josh, but, you know, the Councilman Roman has, I, I would like to see what the gentleman that had came and presented, I would like to see, hear more information from them.
Yeah, this is theirs.
So, yes, but you've, you've tweaked and messed with it and all of these things, and you've presented your own stuff, and so it's all over the place.
Absolutely.
I would like to have someone who has, you know, that is knowledgeable in this field to present that, then we can look at it and go from there.
Okay, so what I hear is, we're not gonna bring back anything next time, other than putting it on the agenda as a discussion. That's what we're gonna bring back.
This one, I don't think it's due.
Not even that. I mean, if it comes for discussion, you'll know, and then you'll put it in the agenda. But, I mean, it, it all depends on what we hear.
If it doesn't come tonight, and Josh comes tomorrow and says, I want to bring it back, I am gonna put it under council comments. If the body decides tonight that you want it as an agenda item, either as a discussion or as a sample ordinance, then you need to tell me that tonight.
I'm, I'm not trying to speak for everybody else, but I don't think, I think it would be appropriate to be under. What, I don't know. I, I think we need to just be able to hear more information and then go from there, wherever that takes us, and if it takes us nowhere, then, but at the same time, we all represent our wards in the city, and we've heard from both sides, and people want to know more.
Megan, the best thing to do is to make a motion. We need to be clear what it is that we're gonna do. Make a motion as to what you want to do next.
Do, do you want to have discussion with them at the next meeting, Megan? Am I understanding that?
I'm pretty sure that the mayor had already stated that they were, you know, more than welcome to come and speak during citizen comment, and so they'll be speaking then. But they could also send, you know, the newest information to us, you know, a very cleaned up draft.
Right, but we do have presentations, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, we do have presentations, I know it's a lengthy process to get that going, but.
So, you would prefer it on, under council comments, then?
I mean, we're, we're getting ready to hear them under council comments. I mean, I'm not trying to tell the future, but I imagine.
I just meant at the next meeting.
At the next meeting? I, I don't know, I mean, we're gonna find out what's said and go from there. That's what it sounds like to me.
So, what it sounds like to me is, you want us to put on the agenda the same topic under discussion status?
Nothing, they can put it anywhere right now.
We're just.
If, if he want.
We just want to hear what everyone has to say during.
I'm okay, I'm okay doing nothing, but then I'm gonna be honest enough with Josh when he comes in tomorrow that said if the body didn't take an action, then Josh is, is very welcome to say his piece under the citizen comments at the next meeting.
I believe Nathan said that he has a right to bring an ordinance up for consideration, though.
In that section.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then.
He's okay with that, I'm okay with that. If you want it in the agenda for a formal discussion on an ordinance, then council needs to tell us that.
I'd say either you're comfortable with that, or make your motion otherwise, that's essentially what he's saying.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, I will bring, I can communicate with you tomorrow, and we can put this under council comments.
You're good with that, neither of us are good with that, I'm good with that. Okay. Next item, a resolution to enter into an agreement with Revised for Website Services, John.
It is hard to pivot on some of these conversations, isn't it?
Well, we got four more hours, just give it your best.
Okay, we've been dealing with an old website since 2002, built and operated internally. We've desperately been needing to upgrade, upgrade that, also move it into a mobile app. Council has authorized money through the ARPA funds to do that. We had allocated up to $25,000. After a solicitation in which 19 firms responded, we brought to council the warrant of revised, which council approved, and so we've included in the packet tonight the motion to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement with revised. It's for $12,200 for the first year, and then successive years are $3,400. It also gives us a redesign of the website in the year 2028. We've been interviewing firms, meeting with firms, revised does a lot of work in Missouri, yet they still keep a unique look about the way they approach these. We think there's gonna be an excellent firm to work with, an excellent tool for communications with our citizens. So, we would encourage a motion to approve the resolution.
John, who maintains, who will maintain, you know, websites are only as good as they are kept fresh. Who's gonna do that?
For the most part, it's gonna be administration. It's gonna be Lori and I coordinating with some delegated authority for updating of that website to specific people in various departments, but not wide open for anyone to.
Okay, I'm not comfortable with that.
No, we don't have anybody else.
If you're advising on content, but not one of you is a programmer.
No, but revised specifically is designed for an easy updating. It's a, it's a very simple service of doing that.
Just so we don't spend money, got a nice product, and six months or a year later, it looks like you know what.
Yeah, and that's what we like about revised, we can do the editing in-house very easily.
Okay.
So, what do they maintain, so, it, it's being up, kept up by us, what are they maintaining?
They're designing it, they're hosting it.
They're hosting it, is what the 3,400 annually moving forward to do.
Correct.
So, will the website update, will it make it easier for public participation? Like, is there gonna be?
Everything about it will be easier.
So much better, because our website.
Pay online, survey impact, feedback, lots of things. And so, really, a $34, $3400 for hosting the web domain and advising and providing the editing materials and doing the training, this is as low cost as we found. We found proposals that were $100,000 and $20,000 a year in recurring fees. So, this is just a firm who specializes in municipal work, and their work is very, very easy to manage.
If there's issues with, like, online payment, sometimes there's gonna be glitches or issues, like, is that on us to, like, figure out what's going on, or will they, like, a part of the hosting is they'll maintain issues if there's problems with the website.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
John, they provided a list of customers, and I think during evaluation and due diligence, you looked, or either contacted some of these people, or looked at them. Of all the customers they have. they have, have you looked at any city in particular and said, geez, that's what we want?
As far as the design of the website?
Right, just so council can go look at something as to what they can expect to get.
Gosh, I mean, Jefferson City was great, Salem's is simple, St. James's is simple and well done, yet they'll all have a unique look to them, but there's a characteristic that's consistent throughout them. So quite frankly, any of these, we've talked to probably a half dozen cities specifically.
But as a user, as a user that's going to look at these, which one from a user's perspective says, that's what we want?
I would say Jefferson, Maryland Heights, and St. James would be the three that I would look at. And that'll give you a feel for what they do.
Okay, this gives council a chance to go
Yeah.
Look.
What happens with, so we budgeted $25,000 or assigned that money for this use. Can we roll that over into the future expenses? So it's only costing about $12,000 this year. What happens with the additional thirteen?
Only through 2026.
Bid low and make money on change orders.
Okay, so can we, can we do that? Can we take money that we didn't spend here and
Council can reauthorize, but yeah, ultimately.
So you would have to come back
Yes.
reauthorize the use of the additional ARPA funds?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking. Thank you.
Hey, John, does the pan line include RMU?
Does it what?
Include RMU?
No. They may want to change with this, but I think they just went through a update not too long ago on their website.
They probably have a link.
I'd love to have them an app form and safe payment.
At one of the last meetings, he said they were coming out with an update. We don't know what that looks like, but Rodney was here. I don't know if it's Rodney or not, but I don't know what that looks like.
Theirs is not very user friendly.
Yeah, that was Jason that said that last time.
That's right. Thank you.
I mean, I hate to throw them under the buck, but I hope ours doesn't look like that.
No, it'll look great. This will be some of the product.
John, so would this make it easier to eventually be able to look at ordinances and stuff like that easier?
Well, we're in the process of already doing the full update of code through gen code, so there we're about probably halfway through that process. Of course, that has a link on our existing website and that same gen code hosted codification services will be transferred over to the news website.
Good, because I've had a lot of people ask me that, like, it is not user friendly to try to search any of these ordinances, so.
Really, even on what gen code's providing.
With what, what they've looked at in the online, so.
It's way better than it was.
Yeah, it's way better than it was.
Yeah, I remember what it was, so, alrighty.
So the motion?
Read the resolution first, if there's no more discussion.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the city of Rolla, Missouri, a contract for website services with Revised.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next item is a motion to award a design contract to Lockmueller.
In 2021, Lockmueller Group completed a traffic study of the 18th Street, bars the old St. James Road intersection. The executive summary for that study is in your packet. Out of that study, the recommendation for an intersection was around about, so staff is proposing to engage a consultant to take those preliminary plans to right-of-way plan stage. That would give us enough detail to know what right-of-way we need for that project. We scored five consultants based on their qualifications and Lockmueller was selected. So staff is requesting a motion to award the bid to Lockmueller Group and the first arraigned ordinance authorizing the mayor into contract with Lockmueller for $211,400. Is there any questions?
Questions?
I do have a question. Hold on, I'm sorry, let me, so this is so this is just to get the project started, we're going to get started on this as soon as we vote on this?
The design work?
Yes. The design work, okay. The only question that I had was the portion on 18th Street that crosses over the railroad track, so, you know, I was talking with one of, an engineer about, and his only, an engineer about this, his only concern was that that's not a lot of leadway from the railroad track. What can we do to kind of move that circle like back to have a, or is it just going to consistently, I don't know?
There's standards, there's applicable standards on that distance.
Okay, I'm just curious, I'll probably ask this question throughout the process.
I mean, any intersection design you do that's close to a railroad, you got to take that into account, you know, but I will say the further, you know, closer removed to the school, the more expensive the right-of-way gets, so it's kind of a, you know, balancing act there.
Interesting.
But this firm, Darren, will also work, have to work on all the permitting process with the railroad and if this has to get shifted, it'll factor in those kinds of things. That's why a big part of this work is going to be that cooperation with the railroad. And this may be a project that we don't build for five or 10 or 15 years, but we'd need to buy this, any right-of-way so that something doesn't develop and then we're having to then buy something post-development, so.
Roger that.
There's not an urgency on this project, there's more of an urgency in getting the final design done and the right-of-way acquired.
Okay.
But you don't really think 10 or 15 years, right? Because I know people
Yeah, it's funny, on Facebook Twenty-two years for a 72 extension.
It's got a lot of feedback on social media and a lot of people said this is the one area that it makes sense.
Yes.
That being said, there were still plenty of critics about it.
I've heard a lot of it makes sense, yeah.
To Josh's point, when we do purchase the right-of-way, is it going to take into consideration not riding the edge of the minimum distance from the railroad tracks or is it just going to be completing a minimum distance?
I don't have the answer for that right now.
The engineers will have to go through that.
I guess the engineers will give us the optimum or the regulatory answer. Whether the city wants to push that back, that is a separate decision on how much money you want to spend. I think that's the, that's the bottom line.
Is there any way that because of the proximity to a railroad track that we wouldn't be able to do this project?
So I mean, part of this project will require some permitting from the railroad. I can't picture them saying no, but I mean, the railroad could say no, yeah.
Well, before we drop a couple hundred thousand dollars to get plans to get going and then we run into a wall saying, oh, by the way, you can actually do that. I think I was surprised at the sticker price, just to get like, oh, this is just to find out to get going. I think I forget how expensive this process is.
I would tell you, I mean, we have a project here, I mean, to Josh's point, I mean, you know, if the railroad just absolutely says, no, you can't impact our right-of-way at all, then the answer is it gets, you know, moved closer to the school. I mean, I think we have a project, whether we move forward with it, that'd be a council decision.
I know it's not what we're voting on tonight, but I would just like to note that that section of 18th Street to the railroad track, after discussing it with a profound engineer, I think that I would like to see it just a little bit more leadway between the railroad track and the circle itself.
That's not the purpose of this discussion.
I understand that, I'm just noting it in case it doesn't come back to us.
Well, I'm sure, so the results of this will come back to council?
Will it?
Yes.
The product here is going to be a recommendation along with plan specs and so on and so forth.
Perfect.
So at that point in time, you're going to see it's X amount of feet.
Okay.
And somebody's going to say, well, that's what we, that's what the regulations require and that's the permission that the railroad will give us.
Thank you.
Then you could say, well, Darren, what if we go another 50 feet? What does that mean?
Okay, thank you.
And I will say we have no money budgeted for right-of-way acquisition in this budget, so it would be, you know, they're saying it's about, this is about a 12-month project dealing with the railroad, so, you know, the hope would be we'd have at least an idea of how much money to put in the budget for next year to consider, you know, purchasing right-of-way.
If there's no other question, is there a motion to award the design contract to Lockmueller?
Josh will make a motion to award the design contract to Lockmueller Group Company.
Hahn will second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Rolla, Missouri to execute on behalf of the city of Rolla, Missouri, a certain amendment, number one, between the city of Rolla, Missouri and the Lockmueller Group for professional services for intersection improvements, 18th Old St. James Beardsley, project number 528. Bardsley.
Last item under new business, is a resolution to approve the addition of public safety.
And council, I recall back on November 18th, you authorized us to proceed with the notice to consider adding a new subcategory under loggers. Loggers is local area government employee retirement system. It's a pension plan that we've been affiliated with for 40 years or so. Currently, we have three different groups under our pension plan with general employees, police, and fire. Currently, dispatchers for the 911 center are operating under our general classification of employees. There was a change in law in 2022 that allowed this new subcategory called public safety. It would include jailers or EMS if we happen to have those services, which we don't in Rolla's case, at least at this time, and dispatchers in there. So there is attached a resolution that allows us to formally notify loggers of the implementation of this new classification for dispatchers. It basically gives them the same retirement benefits that police officers and firefighters have. It's a little bit enhanced from what the general employees have in that they can have early retirement at 55 and full retirement at, no, early retirement 50 and early retirement, full retirement at 55. So that resolution is included in your packet for approval. We did not have any comment, public comment over the 45-day posted notice.
John, will this be retroactive for employees currently that have been here for a long time? Will they be able to transfer over?
Yes.
So could, could this put us in a position where it could help us hire additional employees or help that, those individuals in that position find more qualified people that might move into that role, do you think?
And that was the request by the Phelps County Emergency Services Board.
Yes.
I should say is paying for this.
Correct.
It's a city incurred cost. It's estimated between $22,000, it grows to about $28,000 over the next 10 years, and they do believe it's a retention and a recruitment tool. So, yes.
Those folks have a tough job and to give them the opportunity to be on the same standing as law enforcement and others, I think is an important piece of what we can do for them.
That was part of my, my question was just the improvement of recruitment and retention, which it sounds like it would be.
Yeah.
So are they pretty excited? I'm sure to
They are for sure. This is something that we've been talking about for a couple of years, but we really wanted them to initiate this as a board and we got that information, you know, a couple of months ago, we brought that to council in November, so.
It seems like loggers is a really great benefit.
It's a great organization. We've been with them a long time. The last three pages in your packet, room numeral 6789, is the actuarial analysis on this sub-department split, so basically the Phelps County Emergency Services Board will be paying 12.2% of full-time dispatch salaries into the loggers pension. The proposal in the resolution that had this take effect March 1.
There's no further questions? Can we read the resolution?
A resolution to approve the addition of public safety personnel members under the Missouri Local Government Employees Retirement System.
Fredley will make a motion?
Josh will second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Moving on to claims under fiscal transactions, we have two. First is consider a motion to accept the proposal from Davenport. Don?
So this is for software for community development and public works departments. A little history, when I first got here almost a year ago, one thing that the employees of community development overwhelmingly, they did not like our current system, so it really at this point is not much more than just a place to store our documents. Inspections are done by hand and then scanned in. It's really hard to pull up, so when we get a sunshine request, it takes a while to pull that, extract that data. Our reports, I guess we'll say are very lacking. They were set up initially by GovQA and we don't have the ability to really change them ourselves, so I have to go in every month. The county asks for a little extra data. I have to go in every month and extract that data and send it separately to the county because we don't have the ability to change it. When we called GovQA to try to do some of those things, they didn't even recognize who we were. At the time that we entered into the agreement, we didn't pay for any additional support, so we don't get any support from them. And so I started talking through that, then started talking to public works. They were also looking for a solution for their right-of-way permits and work orders. They had already started looking, one thing that they had looked for was going to cost about $12,000 and they were going to have to build that system themselves and maintain it. Right now, they're doing all of that through paper and spreadsheets. And the reporting that you guys see from our end every month is basically we're extracting data and putting it into a spreadsheet for you. So we put out an RFP, we got five responses. Some of them were very expensive, some of them didn't really respond well to the RFP, so we sat down, we chose three of them and had them do demos for us. Two of them pretty well were the same kind of demos, but one stood out in the fact that they did not charge extra for modules. So modules meaning planning would be a separate module, code enforcement would be a separate model, the module, the work order would be, and they charged about $10,000 for each one of those. The difference with Davenport is they don't charge per module, they charge per person, and so that allows them to support people, you know, jurisdictions that have 12,000 people all the way up through New Orleans is one of their customers. The benefit of that is that anytime they change anything or upgrade anything, we'll get that benefit. So the implementation is $100,000. That does include the first annual fee, and then every year after that, it's roughly about $23,000 to $24,000. Right now, I'm paying almost $11,000 for GovQA and like I said, public works for the solutions that they were looking for was about $12,000. I guess that's basically all I have. If you have any questions?
Any questions for Don?
Just real quick, in the, on page 7A1, the opening sentence to the fifth paragraph, the system will allow users or will allow citizens, contractors to do business online without coming to city hall for a user-friendly portal on our website. So I'm curious, why not just use the website developers that we just hired and build the workflow out ourselves within that framework? What's so special about this package that you can't do that?
So this specifically will integrate with our inspection systems, our permitting systems, so when they do something through the portal, it's going to input all of that data so that we can issue permits. Then, once we issue the permits, our inspectors can go out with, you know, a phone or a tablet. They could take pictures, they can do inspections right there from that. I don't know that a website service would be that specialized for permitting and planning and work orders.
Nope.
It would, it would be part of our website, but it would be its own page on our website.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. We could, we could take this new LAMA package and put it on our existing website. It's just a portal for access.
Right.
Quite frankly, it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that, so we'll do this transition at the same time we're getting a new website and this will be incorporated to that new website. So they're really kind of two things, but the interaction will come through the website.
Okay, so we still go, you still go through the city website, but it would be, the city website would be running this software in the background in order to service it?
No, the website's just going to refer to
Hand it off. You'd actually hand off to a separate application?
Okay, right.
Seamless to the consumer, but behind the scenes, totally different hosting of that.
And that does bring up a good point. Right now, we do everything by email and it bogs down everybody's emails, and so in this system, it would all be within that system. It would, it would, and it's integrated with Outlook, so it would send, if you have a review due, you just do it through that system as opposed to me trying to keep track of five different people emailing me comments.
So it's the same as any other modern customer service, you know,
Yes.
centralized tracking system for each issue that comes in, all the correspondence, it's all captured there. Any inspections that are done, it's all captured there.
Yes.
So that for record-keeping and reporting purposes, it's really easy and for management, then training everybody on how to use the software is seamless because it's the same software across users.
Correct, yeah.
So this is five-year, is that correct? And you said that one of the things that
And you said that, one of the things that you said, that upgrades are all part of this. We don't pay extra for upgrades.
If they upgrade things, we, we get to enjoy that benefit.
There's no other questions or a motion to accept?
Josh will make a motion to accept.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Second item under fiscal transactions is to consider a motion to award a public safety bid.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening, Keith.
You all.
Oh, wait, 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 timeout. I didn't know it was a resolution. Hold on. Sit tight. Let's go back, read the resolution.
Oh.
It doesn't say resolution on the write-up.
No.
Are we sure it's a resolution?
Get you it.
Motion to accept proposal from Davenport, LAMA for permitting software and resolution to enter into agreement with the same.
It's on the agenda that way, but it's not on.
On the paperwork, yeah.
On the packet, so. What do you want to do, resolution?
Yeah.
Resolution.
Okay.
Read the resolution.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a software as service, SaaS, agreement between the city of Rolla and the Davenport Group USA Limited.
Is there a motion to accept?
Josh will make that motion.
Hon, hold a second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Chief, go ahead.
First off, before I get started, I just want to thank you all for the resolution that you passed for the dispatchers at our work. They are probably the hardest working people in our department. They have a difficult job. They take the calls. We go out and handle them while they sit there and wonder what's going on. Are we safe for the people that called in, safe? Just a very difficult job. They have a heavy workload and everything, so on behalf of them, I want to thank you for the resolution that you passed on their behalf. Now to my issue. You recently approved for me and my department to purchase five vehicles. Those vehicles have been ordered. We now have to, I come to you with requesting the money to outfit these vehicles. And by that, I mean to put the stickers on them, to put the radios, the sirens, everything that goes on the vehicles. We actually came in substantially under budget this time because three of the vehicles are what we refer to as unmarked police vehicles. So they're not going to be marked and all the lights and everything that they have in them are going to be hidden. They're not going to be up on top of the roof or anything. So that saves money substantially when we do things like that. So we sent it out to three different companies as well as advertising it in the newspaper and public safety outfitters came in with a bid for thirty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. The next closest bid was Turnkey Mobile, which was two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars higher than public safety outfitters. And then Don Brown Chevrolet came in with over three thousand, one hundred dollars more. So we're requesting that you approve us to use public safety outfitters.
Chief, have you used them before?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. And how long do you think it'll be before the vehicles and, because you remember the problem we had?
Oh, yes, I know.
Yeah.
And we, we were assured that it would not take that long.
Okay.
They are, they're, they told us that at the latest, it would be April.
Let me ask, let me ask you this, though. The real issue the last time was the fact that the order got canceled and we got stuck with improvements.
Right.
So why are we doing it this way again? Or can you write a contract with these people to say, yes, you will get the business, but if we don't get the vehicle, this is null and void?
I don't, I honestly don't know. I'll have to find that out. But I have been assured by Don Brown Chevrolet, we're just getting our vehicles.
For Newcastle people that were here. Now, it's a little bit different, you know, the automakers were in a different situation, but we bought vehicles with a long lead time. We went ahead and awarded a contract to fit them out. And then the people that were going to supply the vehicles canceled the order.
And then we went back.
And we got stuck.
But I, but I just want to say that all of that equipment that we got stuck with, we used it later on.
Okay.
Vehicles for the.
Which was a miracle that we were able to do that. Maybe going forward, having that safety measure in place would be a good idea, just so that way for future purchases.
Yeah, and we can certainly make this contingent on receipt of the, of the vehicles.
Right. I will make sure that, I tell the captain in charge of this to make sure that that's done.
Thank you.
So will that reflect on, on this time?
I hope so.
Like, do we need to make a motion to approve with that?
I think that'd be fine.
Exception?
Yep.
Okay. Do I do that or?
I think you need to say the words.
Either one of us.
I know people had more questions, though, or anything. So I'll make a motion to approve public safety outfitters with the contingency that there be an agreement that we don't pay for this to be paid for until the vehicles come in. Does that clear as mud or?
No.
Okay.
Sounds good. Second.
Motion made and accepted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Citizen communication. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Gentlemen, is your chance.
Mayor, are we going to ask for three minutes for individuals?
Three minutes. Lindsey?
Hi, Lindsey Bagnall. First off, I have very strong concerns about enacting any kind of ordinance from the city of Rolla on this. I feel it's grandstanding and it is serving the purpose of the people who are coming to Rolla from Texas and it's not serving any purpose for the city of Rolla. I don't think it changes anything from the discussion I heard tonight. I think citizens still have the rights that would be enshrined in this ordinance, but we would not have the negative publicity that I see coming to us. Plus, we don't want the ACLU to come in, please. I also think it's outside the purview of our city to be interfering with those kinds of decisions. That's state and federal law. It's already in place. I just don't really feel that our city has a right to do that or should be involved in that. Kent and I have worked really hard for the last forty years to make this community a really cool place to live. Kent did the dog park, we did the little free libraries, we had a business that we built, we served people. We've done a lot and I would really hate to see this negative publicity come in and destroy everything that we worked so hard for. This is a wonderful community. Let's keep it that way. Medical situations sometimes can cause actions that some people think are abortions and others call life-saving. I don't feel that the city of Rolla has the expertise or the right to interfere in these decisions. If some human wants to sue because some doctor took medical action to save a woman's life, okay, go ahead, but I don't think the city of Rolla wants to get in the middle of that. If that's not enough to convince you to say no to an ordinance, I'd like to appeal to your humanity and I'd like to tell you my story. Any attempt to legislate the medical care of Rolla's women offends me to the core because of the experiences I have had. Because if you'd had your way, you call yourself pro-life, but if you'd had your way, I'd have died in nineteen eighty-seven when I was bleeding to death from a ruptured fallopian tube caused by an ectopic pregnancy. This bit of tissue grew large enough to burst the tube and cause internal hemorrhage and massive scar tissue. My life was saved by emergency surgery performed expertly in Rolla. Thank God I didn't have to go to St. Louis or some other state where I would have died on the way. Two years later, I had Hannah and we were very happy. A few years later after that, I had another ectopic pregnancy. This time I knew what it was and I was treated with medication based on what my doctor's recommendation was. If I'd had your way and not been able to get that medication, I'd have died then because you denied me the treatment. But I didn't die. And two years later, I had Lydia. If you know these women, you know they are valuable members of society and I cannot believe that you would wish that they had never been born, which would have happened under what you want to do. I also know a woman who carried an anencephalic fetus. The fetus has no brain. This happens more times than you would think. Since labor started by the fetus's brain, this baby would never have been born and without medical attention would have rotted inside the mother, killing both of them eventually, but slowly and painfully. Do you really think this woman should have been left to die? This quote sums it up for me. Allowing a woman to suffer a die while forcing her to carry a non-viable fetus is pure evil, not pro-life. Please don't turn my hometown into pure evil. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Britt Giger. Uh, Giger, that's G.I.G.E.R.
Where's your first name?
Britt, B.R.I.T.T. Hi, friends. I've been coming to these meetings for a long time. Like, when you're in student council and leadership program, you have to come and you have to sit, so. I'm used to it. That was years and years ago. I've been here through COVID, I've been here through all the other things. And I don't mean this meanly, but I kind of do. I am used to the embarrassing, crazy, chaotic things that happen in these meetings. Like, I am used to talking to people on Tuesday and be like, what was said? And then we watch the YouTube clips and then we read the paper and then we see the fights with Rolla downtown business and with the police and with whoever else. Like, I am used to that. It's just kind of what happens here. What I'm not used to and what is absolutely heartbreaking is the idea of this being on a national level, like being nationally embarrassed by what's happening in here. That scares the shit out of me. I don't want to scroll TikTok and see this meeting. Like, we couldn't even get this meeting taken care of. We didn't have notes organized, we didn't have anything. And we're arguing over something we're not actually sure should exist or not and that is terrifying. And we're doing it because someone who doesn't live here proposed this idea. I'm not here to argue with you if you're pro-choice or pro-life, I, I don't care. I just want you to be focused on the growth of Rolla and I want it to come from a place of love and not from hate. I don't want this to happen and then local businesses to suffer, for tourism to suffer, or for the university to hugely suffer. Can you imagine when they find out what we're doing and that if women don't want to come to our town anymore, how that's going to impact the growth of the university? It just, it feels crazy and chaotic to me that we are doing this because Rolla, I'm sure you know, Rolla's going to get sued. Like ACLU is not going to be like, that's crazy, they're going to sue us. It's going to happen. And it's not a gamble I would take. Like, I would much rather we sit here and do cool, fun things that make Rolla better. And I wish you guys felt the same way. So, good luck. I do want to let you guys know the abortion pill can be shipped and it does not violate the Comsec Act. That was a very simple Google. And we might be looking at birth control being controlled by the Comsec Act. And that's something we really need to think about, too, because we could be wasting all of this time and then we're going to prevent birth control from coming to our community. And if you think, like, this isn't even packed. You guys hosted this on a snowstorm night, let's mention that. You hosted it on a snowstorm night. We shouldn't be having this, there are a ton of viewers. When we start getting to things like if our community can access these things and they can actually get to this meeting, it's going to be crazy and it's going to be embarrassing for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Britt.
Hi, my name is Jenny Cunningham. My husband Michael and I moved here from Rolla in, moved here to Rolla in July twenty twenty-three and have grown to love this community. You may have seen us at the farmer's market, in local restaurants, on campus, at community events, like charity trivia nights and volunteering at both community gardens in town. I'm pretty hard to miss with this green hair. We moved here with high hopes of starting a family thanks to the affordable cost of living, access to childcare and support from the wonderful friends we've made. Our hopes were and are tempered by the valid fear that I will be allowed to die or sustain medical injury due to being refused miscarriage care should the worst happen in a wanted pregnancy. The first question I asked my new OB-GYN team when we moved here in July twenty twenty-three was whether or not they would tell me when I needed to go to Illinois due to a pregnancy complication they were not allowed to treat. With the passing of Amendment Three, we were finally able to breathe a sigh of relief. It was safe to be pregnant in Rolla. Today, uninformed actors from outside of our community have put myself and every Rolla woman and girl in their crosshairs. I am deeply dismayed to see several city council members not only agree with, but roll out the red carpet for the creation of an ordinance which would once again make it unsafe to be pregnant in Rolla. Since the medications Mifepristone and Misoprostal and other materials used by our healthcare providers to treat patients in our community experiencing miscarriages can be used for abortion care, this potential ordinance, whenever we see the result, poses a significant risk of blocking access to that medical care, including for miscarriages and emergency situations. Is this really what we want for Rolla's families, including the one that we are trying to have here in this community we have grown to love? Are you, my neighbors, going to look my husband and I in the face and tell us and our doctor that you would let me bleed out in the Phelps County Hospital parking lot while hospital admin checked with the legal team to see if I had lost enough blood to get treatment? If my untreated miscarriage turned septic and we had to try to get to St. Louis in time to save my life because we couldn't get Mifepristone or Misoprostal in town, which of you would compound our misery by politicizing our private healthcare tragedy and sue us into financial ruin? This is a bounty hunter law. This turns citizen against citizen during the most terrible and tragic times that people can face in their lives. This is not the community I thought we moved to that would even entertain something like this. It's appalling. We are here today to urge you, the city council members, in the strongest terms to reject adding whatever ordinance Josh brings next to the Rolla Code of Ordinances. A majority of Missouri voters, including a majority of Rolla voters, voted to enshrine Amendment Three, the Right to Reproduct to Freedom Initiative in our state constitution. Furthermore, any ordinance of this kind would be a serious overreach of city council's authority, exposing Rolla to millions of dollars in costly lawsuits. Our elected officials at all levels should focus on improving healthcare outcomes for the public, not inserting themselves into our private healthcare decisions. As, as Ward One members, we are disgusted with your actions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, take a deep breath, people. I'm Joe Dalton. God bless everybody. How y'all doing? I want to start with a question for you guys. I mean, there's passionate.
Joe, just for record, this is not to be an interactive part. I mean, if you're asking a rhetorical question.
It's a rhetorical question. My quiet rhetorical question is, if the pro-choice side found them a, a law that would make it harder, a federal law that would make it harder for pro-life people to do what they do, to put in protections, would they do something with it? Hell, yeah, they would. They would, they might be here trying to pass something. But, but the reality is, I'm, you know, the Pregnancy Center's not bringing this. It's been stated several times, some dude from Texas, I've met him here, actually. But the reality is, what I wanted to bring this down to is what happens in Rolla. Okay? The reality is abortion pills are being mailed to Rolla now. Just a minute ago, it wasn't legal. It wasn't legal to get them anywhere in this state except for in St. Louis. So talk that we're doing something that is, you know, moving on. The problem with all of this is the people that are shipping these into the city, and I've confirmed that it's happening, they're not Planned Parenthood, they're, they may not even be from this country. I don't think Planned Parenthood likes these people or like pirates, but they're selling them without doctors' care. The way it used to work, you would go to St. Louis and you would meet with a doctor, you'd have to meet with a medical professional, a, a medical doctor, then you would have to get an ultrasound to confirm fetal age. And the reason for that is the FDA recommends that less than seventy days from the first day of her last period. So you have to do it before then. That's what the FDA recommends. So now you go to the internet and order them, no consultation, no nothing, and they show up here. Okay, that's a problem. That's scary to me. The reason it's scary is, I'm going to take you on a little path, get, tell you a quick story about a current client we're working with. She ordered and received from a website abortion pills in Rolla when she was six weeks pregnant. Well, she hasn't decided what she's going to do yet. Um, so, I went, I went to this website, uh, because the, the client told us what it was, and I, I didn't order any, just so you know, but I pretended I was going to. And in the checkout, in the checkout, 150 bucks, right? A little thing flashes up and says, guess what? We'll give you $50 off your second order. In other words, order two sets of pills now and save one for the next time. Save one set for the next time. That is so far removed from medical care. They don't even know if they're gonna get pregnant again, but by golly, they're gonna give them 50 bucks off if they, if they order another set. So, that's what I wanted to say. I'm, I urge you to listen to Mr. Dixon, and hopefully something will come of this, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Hi. Dr. Jenny Pennycook here again. I think I spoke last time. Um, just to give some information on a couple of points that were brought up, um, one, there are women ordering these medications nationwide, um, and, and for one reason that they're doing it is that people are afraid these medications are no longer going to be available, even for routine care, um, including when they miscarry and not being able to get it at the pharmacy. So, people are actually ordering these medications preventatively, um, so that they can be prepared if they are in a situation like Jenny here talked about a minute ago. Um, the other thing is, um, to be clear, these medications are used for many reasons other than abortion. Um, Misoprostal is a medication we use, um, in the hospital routinely. We use it to treat people who are hemorrhaging, um, in a life-saving situation, either during miscarriage or even after a normal birth has occurred. Um, for postpartum hemorrhage, we use Misoprostal. Um, we also use it to induce labor for healthy term deliveries. And restricting the ability to get the medication in town could have consequences. Not only that, um, I have had patients that have what's called a missed miscarriage. That's when the baby has passed, there's no longer a heartbeat, but the physical miscarriage hasn't occurred. And for that, it is routine to offer Misoprostal and Mifepristone to treat that, um, to treat that miscarriage. And when pharmacists are scared about things like the Comstock Act and enforcement, whether they can dispense these medications, that makes it hard for people to get these medications. Patients get turned away from the pharmacy, saying they can't fill it because a pharmacist is afraid of getting sued or getting, you know, in trouble or violating a law, because we're not lawyers, we don't understand all the legal implications of everything that we do. Um, Mifepristone is the other abortion drug, and it, too, again, is used to treat a missed miscarriage. This is when a baby has died, but the miscarriage hasn't happened naturally. Uh, untreated missed miscarriages result in, um, infection and hemorrhage ultimately if they're never treated, um, and that is where women die, um, or lose their uterus and can't get pregnant again. So, these things do happen, and, um, I just want you to, to know that there are other uses besides abortion for those medications. Anyway, um, that's all I have to say today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Hi. My name is Reagan Gordon. I'm a resident of Ralla in Ward Two, and I'm a registered nurse. I've worked for a year and a half in labor and delivery locally. Um, I speak only for myself as a private citizen and not for any other organization. Um, as a private citizen, I would like to make a request to the council to consider passing an ordinance to make Ralla a sanctuary city for the unborn. Um, I've had the opportunity to read the updated ordinance. Um, originally, I was actually opposed to the original ordinance and a lot of the, um, things that were proposed in it. Um, however, uh, the revised ordinance is significantly better. Um, it enforces a pre-existing federal law, as we all know, after all of this discussion, um, that limits the mailing of abortion drugs and paraphernalia. Um, you might wonder, why does this matter, or really, how much does it matter? Um, in a recent study, uh, by a pro-choice institute, um, it showed that there was over 650,000 chemical or medication-induced abortions in 2023, um, and that was 63% of all abortions in the United States. This ordinance would eliminate the mailing of these drugs to pharmacies in Ralla and individual homes for the purpose of abortions, not for any other purpose. Um, this would save the lives of countless children. I know many concerns have been brought up during these council meetings about whether this ordinance would restrict or access or harm, uh, existing medical professionals that currently practice in Ralla. And frankly, when I read the original draft of the ordinance proposed on November 18th, I was opposed to it for the same reasons. I now believe that while these legitimate, or, or these concerns are extremely legitimate, they have been addressed in the revised ordinance that Councilman Roman will present at the next meeting. The revised ordinance is not harmful to medical professionals and is actually protective of us with the additions that Councilman Roman is going to be adding. Um, there are no, now no limitations on licensure for medical providers outside of state requirements, um, and this will allow our wonderful and skilled nurse practitioners and certified nurse midwives to continue practicing unhindered without additional unnecessary licensure requirements in addition to their state licensure. As I have understood it, our skilled doctors, nurse practitioners, and midwives will continue to be able to give necessary care to women, including miscarriage, labor and delivery, and emergency obstetrical care. It should not limit Misoprostal, um, a drug used, as mentioned by Dr. Pennycook, a drug that's used for, um, abortions, but is also commonly used for labor inductions and miscarriage care. Um, from, from being shipped to hospitals within Ralla or for, um, prescriptions being filled to patients for miscarriage care, because those drugs are not prescribed and administered for abortions, they're prescribed for emergent care, miscarriage care, or labor inductions. Um, if that is not the case within this ordinance, I would urge you, as you're considering and writing this ordinance, to establish that very clearly within it. Um, there are also protections for providers that protect them from being sued under this ordinance for providing this necessary life-saving care if presented with a difficult choice of saving the life of the mother or the child. It would not affect treatment for ectopic pregnancies, IVF, fertility treatment, Plan B, emergency contraceptives, regular contraceptives, or IUDs in any way. Um, women's health care would basically continue as it currently is in Ralla. Um, I, as a result, um, would urge the council to take bold steps to protect not just women and providers, but unborn children by, um, proposing and voting yes on this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pamela Timson. I've been a resident of Ralla for over 40 years. Um, I had three children in, in this town. I was lucky. I had a condition where I might have died during childbirth, and I didn't realize how lucky I was until in the last year, a friend of my son's lost his wife because she died during childbirth. It happens. There are reasons why women choose not to carry out a pregnancy. But that isn't really what I meant to say, but I just wanted to go with what Lindsay said. I also wanted to, again, reiterate what Lindsay said, and that is, that this is constitutional amendment in the state of Missouri that we're talking about. And we're talking about the little town of Ralla wanting to bring an ordinance that would change that or, or even qualify it. And we haven't given our state government a chance to qualify these things yet. You all tonight have made it very clear, you have no idea what the consequences will be if you pass this ordinance. Please, please, take that into very serious consideration before you just hop on the train to be the first ones to say, we're with it. Think about the consequences of what you are considering. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Markley Dixon from the great state of Texas. I was invited to this community. I did not just draw the name of this community out of a hat, was invited here. And I wish we had time to really address all of the misinformation that has been broadcast online during this council meeting, the disrespect towards the Attorney General of Missouri. It's very discouraging. Uh, the city attorney not only got the city of Lubbock in that case completely wrong. He also got Missouri state law wrong and the Comstock, Comstock, uh, Comstock Act wrong as well. Just this past Feb, well, February of 2023, the Attorney General of Missouri sent a letter to CVS, Walgreens, a lot of places, and they talk about this Office of Legal Counsel opinion. The only thing that y'all's city attorney did to perfection at, in today's presentation was accurately represent and push the opinion of the Biden administration's Office of Legal Counsel. That opinion from the Biden administration, this Office of Legal Counsel, is an opinion that y'all's Attorney General calls, and I quote, "a bizarre interpretation," and they reject it in its entirety. The opinion that was presented is also the opinion of the ACLU. And regarding to Missouri law, Attorney General Bailey does say here in this letter that it is unlawful to distribute an abortion drug through the mail, according to Missouri law. Because there's not ample time in three minutes to address all of the misinformation, we will be publishing a response to every single statement made in error by y'all's city attorney in the local newspaper, week by week, just to educate the public. And we'll also be addressing the issue that you raised, Mayor, and, and Councilman Fridley, that this really is a, a pro-life issue, pro-life or pro-choice. This is an issue of, are we going to stand with the Attorney General of Missouri, or are we gonna stand with the ACLU? And in closing, I just gotta say, the purpose of this ordinance is very clear if you just read the ordinance itself. Says to preserve the safety, health, peace, good order, comfort, convenience, morals, and welfare of all inhabitants within the city of Ralla, and to ensure the federal provisions on the shipment of abortion pills and abortion-related paraphernalia are obeyed. This, that that is why the city council would find it necessary to enact this ordinance. And that is actually, I would really encourage you to read the letter the Attorney General wrote to CVS, Walgreens, and others, because he talks about the danger of these abortion-inducing drugs and why this is so important. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Andrew Barrett, Ward Two.
Unlike the previous speaker, I am a resident of this city, and I have a stake in its future. I believe that a city government exists to solve problems, not create them. And yet, it seems that some factions of this council can't help but stir up more trouble and use their seat to launch one moral crusade after another, regardless of what is good for our town and apparently regardless of constitutional law. Pursuing this half-baked sanctuary city ordinance would be another unforced error, indeed, I think, a monumental blunder, given the stakes. Contrary to its claim, in the draft that we received, that it would preserve the safety, health, comfort, and welfare of our citizens, it would instead call upon outside forces into this town. It would encourage citizens to become vigilantes, one against the other, to set neighbor against neighbor. And I would intervene here to say that as a historian of Eastern Europe, I know something about authoritarian regimes. Uh, they thrive upon citizens informing on one another, upon spies being made out of common people. Ask yourself if that is the city you would like to live in, indeed, the society that you'd like to live in. Moreover, this, this ordinance would seek to arrogate the power of this body above the constitutional order in order to legislate morality. And so, I ask you to please put down this firebrand. Please don't make our city a political pawn, and instead, please recommit yourselves to the hard, real business of governance, instead of finding new ways to tell people in the city how to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council. Uh, my name is Heath Petrie. Heath like the candy bar, Petrie like the little flying dinosaur from Land Before Time. I live in Ward One. I'm from 111 South Elm Street. Please come by if you wanna speak after this. I don't mind at all. I'll be up past midnight. That being said, um, one of my friends was up here earlier, Ms. Britt Giger. Uh, she mentioned that there is a very quick, uh, Google search you can partake in, uh, OTC abortion medicine. You click the first link that pops up, takes you to a news article, you scroll down, you click the first, next first link that pops up, you scroll down, exit out of the ad, then you scroll down to where it says, through the mail. It's another link. And this link mentions that the U.S. Postal Service can continue to deliver prescription abortion medication despite a June 2022 Supreme Court ruling that overturned a landmark abortion decision, the Justice, the Justice Department said on Tuesday. The USPS said in a statement, the opinion confirms that the Comstock Act does not require the postal service to change their current practice. They consider packages containing these two abortion medications, uh, that I have troubles pronouncing, uh, to be mailable under federal law in the same manner as every other prescription drug. Now, um, another gentleman was up here and mentioned how some drugs can be dangerous, especially without, uh, medical advice. Um, I'm sure some of you have seen the, um, misinformation regarding vitamin B17, if you've ever heard of that. Anybody can get it. Um, it's found in bitter almonds, actually, very, very popular. Um, however, uh, the caution about vitamin D17 is that it is cyanide. That's what it is. If you are partaking in that, it's just cyanide. Turns out, there's a lot of things you can just order through the mail that are dangerous without medical advice. Um, I just wanna point that out. That's not one reason to ban any one thing. That's not one reason to go after any one thing. Um, that being said, which way I swing on this issue, I'm sure you can tell. I'm very pro-life, or not pro-life, apologies. I'm very pro-choice, um, and I believe that, and I personally believe that the pro-life movement should be renamed as the Forced Birth Movement, uh, because that's really what it achieves. Um, that being said, everybody has their opinions on it, um, and as George Carlin once said, I'm sure you've all heard of him, I love comedians. They're all in favor of the unborn. They'll do anything for the unborn. But once you're born and you're out on your own, that's it. The pro-life are obsessed with the fetus from conception to nine months. After that, they don't wanna know about you. They don't wanna hear about you, nothing, no neonatal, neonatal care, no daycare, no Head Start, no school, no school lunches, no food stamps, no welfare, no nothing. You're preborn, you're fine. You're preschool, I won't say what he says after that. It's obscene. That's my opinion as a citizen of Ward One who wanted to have his voice heard today. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, I'm glad, uh, last time it was good morning, but, uh, good to see you this evening. Uh, again, I'm sorry, Brian Westbrook, and, uh, I come from St. Louis County, Missouri. Uh, to just reiterate, uh, the words of Mark, uh, we did not simply pick Ralla out of a hat. We were invited specifically for the things that you guys are discussing today, that the original ordinance that you received, we, we advise significantly to modify that to be in alignment with both state and federal, uh, laws. To be very, very clear, some of the speakers specifically talked about miss, um, what they called missed abortions, and, uh, which is a very interesting phrase, or missed miscarriage. Uh, a missed abortion is when the child has already died--
That's my opinion as a citizen of Ward One who wanted to have his voice heard today. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad, last time it was "good morning," but good to see you this evening. Again, I'm sorry, Brian Westbrook, and I come from St. Louis County, Missouri. To just reiterate the words of Mark, we did not simply pick Ralla out of a hat. We were invited specifically for the things that you guys are discussing today, that the original ordinance that you received, we advise significantly to modify that to be in alignment with both state and federal laws. To be very, very clear, some of the speakers specifically talked about missed, what they called "missed abortions," which is a very interesting phrase, or "missed miscarriage." A missed abortion is when the child has already died and the body has not miscarried that child properly. We're not talking about that. We're not talking about ectopic pregnancies. We're not talking about other uses of these drugs. We're talking about unlicensed places, and right now, there are no licensed abortion facilities in the state of Missouri right now. Let's be very, very clear. You cannot legally do an abortion in the state of Missouri right now. There's no licensed place in the state of Missouri to do abortion. Amendment Three did not just all of a sudden let abortions happen everywhere, and so I think it's very, very clear that we don't want, or well, the city council has informed me, and other citizens have informed me, that they do not want abortion-causing drugs or devices mailed in. We are here to advise and help in every regard we possibly can. That's why we're here. But also, right now, you guys are thankfully broadcasting this on YouTube, people are watching around the state, around the country, they're watching what you're doing here today, and frankly, everybody that I'm talking to around the state think that what you're doing here today is courageous, courageous. And we're not singling Ralla out. I'd love for this to be done in 960 cities all around the state of Missouri. And in fact, we hope to do that in many other places, assuming they invite us. So that's why we're here, why we're here. And my good friend Joe Dalton is right. I also run a pregnancy center in St. Louis, and these drugs are just being mailed willy-nilly all over the place. And that's not healthcare. That's not protecting women's rights or anything. You know, we heard the big national story, and I'll finish with this. The big national story was from Georgia, right? And in Georgia, apparently, there was a woman who died because of Georgia's quote-unquote "pro-life" laws, but it was a complete and utter lie. It was in fact, she was given these drugs and just sent back home and said, "Figure it out on your own." And she ends up in the hospital and dies as a result of taking these drugs. And somehow, some way, that was because of the so-called "pro-life" laws in Georgia, and it was complete and utter lies. These drugs are dangerous, and we don't want our hospitals filled with women because they're taking these drugs. So thank you for your time and attention. Thank you for the invitation to Ralla, and I'll continue to come back as long as I am invited. Thank you.
Hey, Brian, I have a question for you, if you don't want, if that's okay. So it's been brought up, the drugs that are used for abortion but also used for other things. Do you have a legal insight into how that's handled? Are they still allowed to get that, but it's then how it's utilized? Or would that restrict entities from receiving things that are used not for the purpose of abortion but could be used for abortion?
That's a really, really great question. We'll get back with you for an answer. I'd rather not have that dialogue here, but we'll get back.
It's an interesting question and answering, but is it relevant to the ordinance you want to consider?
Yeah, it's incredibly relevant.
Are we now talking about going into an ordinance and specifying the kind of medicine that will be allowed to come to Ralla?
Well, so, I mean, I was, so let me be very clear as well. I have been named an attorney over here several times. I do wear a suit and tie, but I am not an attorney. Let's be very clear, okay? So I can't answer attorney-related questions. I know a lot of attorneys, and many who have held very high offices and are about to hold very, very high offices in the Trump administration, but I am not an attorney, and so I go to them for numerous legal opinions about a lot of things.
Okay. But let me ask you a question. I know you're not an attorney.
Great.
But you stayed at a Holiday Inn, right?
That's it. Thank you. I appreciate the dialogue.
But the ordinance that you're proposing, to Nathan's question, does it differentiate for a particular chemical?
No.
On how it's used?
It specifically talks about abortion-causing drugs. So a drug that would cause an abortion.
That's double talk. I want to be more specific. Are you saying that this ordinance will prevent somebody from getting that particular medicine for something other than an abortion?
There's specifically numerous exceptions in the ordinance for normal general healthcare.
So we are going right down into the details and telling people what they can get and what they can't get.
It specifically talks about.
It's a yes or a no.
It's about abortion-causing drugs that cause abortion, and it's not talking about.
You should have been a lawyer, but that's a slick answer. But the point is, what you're saying is that we are going to go into this ordinance and tell people, "You can get this medicine for this purpose but not this purpose." And that's what we're asking the city council to do?
We're talking about specifically saving lives of both women who are going to get this through the mail illegally, or even legally, I suppose, but I suppose.
I get that.
Right.
And I get all of this. But my answer to both of you is, go fight this somewhere else.
So to be very clear, Mayor.
Fight this somewhere else.
So to be very clear, Mayor, we were invited to be here.
Who invited you? I think the public has a right to know. You said it, he said it. Who invited you?
So the person or persons on the city council can make themselves known if they like.
Mayor, I did.
Okay, fine. As long as, I appreciate that, Josh, I really do, because now the public understands we're not hiding behind something. Thank you. Thank you.
And also Joe Dalton.
Okay.
Right.
So now the public knows. Thank you.
We did not pick this fight. We are here to help, assist, and do everything we can to protect Ralla as much as we possibly can. That's what we're doing here, and we are here to serve.
Your cause is noble. Don't take it personal. I just don't think it's for us to get into the weeds on.
And that's up to the city council to determine. That's not up for myself or Mark to determine. That's up for you guys to determine. We are here to help, assist, and do absolutely everything we can to answer those questions. Final thing I might say is, your city attorney still has not contacted me. The city council has specifically passed a motion that the city attorney would contact myself by name and Mark by name, and it's now been two months later, and he's not done it. He's actually a month past the specific deadline, because there was a date in that motion as well. And so I welcome that discussion, and I am not an attorney, but the city council specifically asked him to contact us. He has not done so. So I request that respectively, so we can have this discussion.
Are we going to have a discussion about the law?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm just, I mean, we could talk about Thanksgiving, or, you know, what we had for dinner, right? But the city council specifically asked for that, and I am open to that discussion, and I would gladly have that discussion.
As long as we don't discuss the law, I'm okay with it. Okay. Does council understand that?
I don't know that council specifically made that.
Council probably didn't know at the time that you were not an attorney.
Nor did I tell anyone that I was an attorney.
I'm blaming you, I'm blaming them.
Great.
So the question is, as long as council understands, Nathan will make the call, but he's not going to have a legal discussion, right? Right. It would be illegal for me to do that. Call him up tomorrow, check the box.
He is supposed to contact us.
I asked him.
Okay, very good.
I did contact Mr. Mitchell, by the way.
And he was not specifically named.
He was, and he's the only attorney in the bunch.
He is an attorney, and he's.
The only attorney.
Right. And he wasn't the one named in the motion, though. Let's be very clear.
That's okay. The council made the request, we agreed. Call him, talk about whatever you want to talk about.
Great, great. I appreciate that, and I'm, again, we are here to serve you as best as we possibly can. That's why we're here, and we definitely want to protect women and children here in Ralla.
And again, your cause is noble. I don't want you to think I feel otherwise.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, I wanted a question. It's passed you, Brian. So I asked a question about the medical, is it Dr. Pennycook? I'm sorry. She had raised her hand with an answer. Can I ask her that question?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Safe drive on the way back to both of you.
So Dr. Pennycook, I'd asked if this would prevent the drugs that are used, and I don't know the names of these, so that's why I wanted to rely on more expertise of the drugs that could be used for abortion, but they also be used for other things as well. Would something like this prevent that from occurring?
Well, I think it would, because what I've experienced as a physician, pre-Dobbs, so before the Dobbs decision came down, is I could prescribe this for miscarriage. And just so you guys have some background for me, too, I did all my training at a Catholic Jesuit institution. I've never been what you would call an abortion provider. But pre-Dobbs, I could write these prescriptions, women could go fill them. I never had any pushback, never had any questions, never had a patient tell me they had trouble getting it. Since Dobbs, I now have had enough pushback, or enough phone calls, or enough patients turned away from the pharmacy, that when I write the prescriptions now, I specifically have to add on to that prescription that this is for miscarriage treatment, not abortion. And so you're basically forcing a woman who's going through one of the most difficult points in her life to disclose that to other people who aren't involved, and really, it's none of their business. So it does prohibit them from getting that care, I would say, because some women are going to get turned away and they're never going to go back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Good evening. Appreciate you all allowing us to have public disclosure and time with you all. My name's Doug Center. I represent, I represent the administration's home Bible study and home church. I just, I know Josh Roman personally, and I know his heart, especially when it comes to the sanctity of life, being a believer that he is, he's a strong believer. The question was asked, why, or why even consider, or those things. It's important to consider. It's important to discuss, disagree, agree, whatever, and go through the process, because there is so much at stake. Yes, the federal level knocked it back down to the states, and unfortunately, it did not pass with Amendment Three. I mean, it did pass with Amendment Three, and then I think not enough believers, not enough churches, not enough pastors even gotten involved, and possibly didn't even vote. And that bothers me. That bothers me as a believer. But as a believer, we have a duty to be what God is for, and that is for life. It's, as it was asked, why? Let the babies live. Let the babies live. And if you look at the ease, that would, it just would make everything so much easier by just going online, no consultation, order the pills like it's you're ordering hair encouraging drugs, or whatever. We cannot go down that road. And why not? Why not go through this process? Many of you on this, on this council are believers. Why not go through this process? Yes, it's probably going to be a long road, but it's for the value of life. It's for us to say, yeah, proudly, yeah, Ralla does make it more difficult to kill human beings, whether, how you look at that or not. Many are for this, this process of going down this road. This wasn't, I applaud Josh for, actually, after Amendment Three and how that went down, I applaud him for not retreating, not putting his head in the sand, how many other believers are, or even church members of different churches, they may not even care, but that man cares, and he came up with this, started inquiring about it. And I thank the Lord for him. And so let's, let's continue on, and it's a heavy, it's a heavy thing to consider. But I think, I think we're reminded of how heavy it is based on what our Creator said about it in Psalm 139. And I appreciate the responses from many of you already from the emails, but it's just amazing when you think about Scripture. For you formed my inward parts; you knitted me together in my mother's womb. I praise you, for I am fearfully and wonderfully made. Wonderful are your works; my soul knows it very well. My frame was not hidden from you when I was being made in a secret, intricately woven in the depths of the earth. Your eyes saw my unformed substance; in your book were written every one of them, the days that were formed for me, when as yet there was none of them. It's just a reminder of how, how much detail and how much our Creator cares for us and cares for life. And I would appreciate if you all would go down this road and consider these things and let Ralla be a part of this, because there's so much at stake. Thank you so much for your time. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
My name's Tracy Wright. This is a very heated conversation, as we all know. I'm trying to find the right words to say what I want to say. And I think there's a huge misunderstanding about pro-choice people. It's not that we're not about, or it's not that we are for killing babies. It's not that we're not for life. We're just also for the mother's lives, too. I think making this ordinance a thing for Ralla as a city is a bad idea. I don't disagree that the whole being able to order these medications online from who knows what companies is a problem. But I think that problem should be taken to those companies that are distributing possibly bad medication or whatever, instead of it being left to pit citizen against citizen over an issue that everybody feels very strongly about. And it's a personal decision. It shouldn't be up to anybody else. God gave us free will, so we can make our own decisions and we can live with our own consequences. It is not for anybody else to decide what I do with my life, or what anybody else does with their. I appreciate the discourse that has happened today, and the wanting the clarification, because I want clarification on what this ordinance is. The repetition of "this is what it is" does not explain what, what the purpose is. And we're trying to understand the purpose. So even if, even if this does pass, what's to stop people from going someplace else, having it shipped someplace else? Why do we want to have our people fight against each other? Why is it my neighbor's business? What goes on in my home? What goes on in my body? Why is it anybody else's business besides me and my husband? It's not. And it's between me and whatever creator I believe in. And it's not about one moral system above another. We're just all trying to live our lives. And I just wish we could do so freely without telling everybody what they can and can't do with their own bodies. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Sheffield. I'm appearing here on behalf of myself. If someone could please provide the ordinance draft so the public can see, there's been a lot of discussion. I'm very confused with which ordinance we're talking about. I looked at the January 6th one. It sounds like that's the incorrect ordinance. That needs to be corrected beforehand. That should not have come here. People are sharing their personal lives here on one of the most important topics that they know. Please, correct that, have that correct, so people can actually evaluate this. It's not helpful to have a discussion without an actual text to base it on. I'd ask you to do that, please. Thank you.
My name is Morgan Bearden. I've lived in Ralla and Phelps County for the past 35 years. It's my understanding from the discussion that we've had that this ordinance really doesn't do anything. I mean, is that right? You got the Comstat Act, and this lays on top of it, saying that we're going to follow that? And I would just like to know what part of conservative philosophy allows for useless laws to be stacked up on top of existing laws? And my other question was, who did the invitation to this bunch of carpetbaggers? But I'm glad that was finally brought up. Thanks a lot.
If there's no further citizen communication, moving on to Mayor City Council comments. And the essence of time, I certainly don't have anything. Anybody else? Maybe just for the record, Lori, when does signing up for elected officials close?
It's early.
December 31st.
It closes ready? Okay. Go ahead, Rob.
So I had, there was about five people that wanted to come out tonight to speak about the fluoride issue. And three of them sent me something. They have small children at home, so they didn't want to come out. This shouldn't take too long, but I told them that I would share their stuff. Why is it when you're looking for something, you can't find it? Oh, my goodness. Okay, so I'll read the first one here. I do have it. Thanks, the council, thanks the council for having these conversations. I think she was encouraged me to do that. Okay, well, thank you, council, for having the conversations. My name is Kim Collins. My husband and I have lived in Ralla for 26 years, where we are raising, where we are raising five children. I also serve as a midwife to families in our community. I have a diagnosis of hyperthyroidism. Because of the negative risk of fluoride on my TSH levels, I personally pay for expensive specialized filters to remove it from my water. Given the prevalence of thyroid disorders in the population, I wonder how many citizens in Ralla either don't realize its effects on thyroid condition or don't have funds to purchase the specialized filters to remove it. In addition, as a midwife, I'm aware of how connected TSH levels are with miscarriage. I've worked with numerous women who, because of TSH values, have experienced increased risk of miscarriages. Also, on fluoride and pregnancy, the fact that fluoride can cross the placental barrier does raise concern about the baby's development. For those who want fluoride in their lifestyle, it is easy, cheap, and convenient to add ample amounts through toothpaste and mouthwashes. For this reason, I support individual choice of fluoride supplementation and its removal from our water system. Let me see if I can find this other one real quick. I apologize, I had it. Oh, here's one. Alyssa Lewis, 607 North Cedar, please remove fluoride from water. I don't agree with mass fluoridation. It is like giving medication to everyone regardless whether it's helpful or can even be harmful. We have heard for years that water fluoridation is one of the greatest medical interventions in the 20th century, and this, and that's what we believe in the 20th century. In fact, the studies used to support water fluoridation are a great thing, that they are a great thing, were published in the 20th century. It is now the 21st century, and we know better. I think after COVID, with all the mandate debacles, we learned to question everything that is deemed settled science. In fact, studies are now clearly showing that fluoride is a neurotoxin, it is a neurotoxin that is able to get into the brain. There is not one good reason for fluoride to be in the brain. Recently, I'm hearing how it lowers IQ and can cause ADHD, autism. With dramatic rise in ADHD and autism, I don't think it's a good idea to have the neurotoxin in our water supply. Fluoridated toothpaste is easily available. Using fluoridated toothpaste makes water fluoridation obsolete. I don't think the idea of the government doing any kind of mass medication, especially without consent, is a good idea. I ask that you remove it from the water supply. And one more, and I think this is a shorter. My name is Mariah Mankin, 301 South Cedar. Many of you remember me. I wish I could be here today, but it's too cold and slick to risk it. I am asking, as a mom who has researched everything from car seats, Tylenol, to water fluoridation, to remove fluoride from the water, Ralla water, ADHD and autism rates are exploding, and these numbers are continuing to get worse, not better. There may be many factors that need to be addressed for us as a society, as a society to get a handle on this crisis. Just accepting fluoride is safe and effective as gospel truth, because we have been doing it for years, and years is not good enough. If we have learned anything over the past few years with COVID, we should question everything and not just accept something because either the government or AMA or ADA says it's true. Fluoride is a neurotoxin, and it is able to get into the developing brain of babies as they are growing. In fact, we are beginning to see warnings for pregnant mothers to stay away from fluoridated water. Please hear this, pregnant mothers should not be drinking fluoridated water. How many pregnant moms are in Ralla right now who have never heard that? Not all developing babies will be affected by fluoride, but what about the ones who are? It may be a small population, but if it is your child, it may as well be 100% affected because if it is you. As the benefit of fluoride on developing teeth, there is none. Babies in utero, fluoride provides no benefit for developing teeth. And that's supported by literature. There is no potential health for teeth enamel in the developing baby. There's only downside of potentially affecting the brain development. Why are we doing this to our children? Fluoride is a known neurotoxin. We pass, it passes the placental barrier. Fluoridated toothpaste is available. So, an interesting tidbit, now that everybody's, you guys still with me?
Right here, man.
I was like all the way in here. I was trying to get through that, sorry. Interesting tidbit, because people have asked me about this. There is a toothpaste that's called Dr. Gin Hydroxy Appetite. It's nano-hydroxy, and it provides the same benefit as fluoride in tightening the enamel. A lot of people have asked me about that, so I want to put that out there. And also, just also, also an interesting tidbit, as astronauts, if you can imagine trying to spit in space, it wouldn't work out well. Gravity's not helping you. So they have to come up with a toothpaste that you swallow, so they will not allow them to have fluoridated toothpaste. They have to have hydroxy appetite type. And it's called, you can look it up, it's called Nasadent. NASA Dent, Nasadent. NASA Dent.
Nasadent makes sense.
That's, that's, that's when somebody's a reader and not a listener, they just read anything. It's not a Nasadent, it's a NASA Dent. So we can talk about this more. I've got more things to say about that, but we'll leave it there alone, because we've had a long meeting. Thank you.
So just along that line.
I appreciate you sharing.
It's on the next agenda. So we've had input, we've had experts on both sides, blah, blah, blah. What is council's, so that we're prepared, what is council's intent at the next meeting? Are you, are you ready to say, take it out or keep it in? Or are we?
I think we're.
I'm ready to make a motion. I will be making, if somebody else doesn't make a motion to remove it from the water.
All right. So we can check that box off one way or another.
Right.
Okay. Any other council comments? Comments to the good of the order, that next meeting is Tuesday, January 21st. So what holiday am I? Not aware.
MLK.
Okay. All right. Please mark your calendars. We have a couple of items for closed session dealing with real estate, legal, and personnel. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fredley?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Roman?
Yeah, I heard of that.
Penner?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Reban?
Yes.
Hesinger?
Yes.
Pond?